Good evening and welcome to our 2009 Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. If I could, would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Katrine Stevens, followed by a moment of silence?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated.
Yes, good evening, School Board members. I know you all feel very honored tonight to have with you our great mayor of a great city of Murfreesboro. Mayor Tommy Bragg is here to honor you and to recognize School Board Week in Tennessee. The theme this week or this year for School Board Week is Empowering Excellence. Mayor Bragg, if you would proceed, read your proclamation and commend our board for the great work they do for the students in this city.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis, and it's a delight and a pleasure to be here and to see such an august body here. Our school board is very important to our city and it's very important to our students and our parents and those administrators and our teachers. And many of the teachers and principals and staff are here with us tonight and I'm certainly happy to recognize you also, and I hope you will join me in making this public recognition of our school board and our members and their contribution to our Murfreesboro City Schools. I would like to read this proclamation and it's important, I think that we do take this time to recognize our school board members because many of us in elected office, we get pats on the back sometimes and sometimes we get uh-ohs. And so many times we don't get recognized. It used to be in the military and they said it took a lot of uh-ohs to make up for one attaboy. So, a lot of times you've got to be real careful about that. Whereas an excellent public education system is vital to the quality of life of our communities and whereas school board members represent a tremendous resource as local decision-makers responding to the challenges of creating 21st century schools that meet Tennessee's higher education standards. And whereas school board members serve their communities by representing the interests of schoolchildren and preparing them for the future. And whereas school board members continually strive for improvement and progress in education. And whereas the men and the women elected by the people as members of our local school boards deserve recognition and thanks for their countless hours of service to public education in Tennessee, now therefore I, Tommy Bragg, Mayor of Murfreesboro, do hereby proclaim this week of January 25th through the 31st, 2009, as School Board Appreciation Week and urge all of our citizens to join me in this worthy observance. Congratulations to each of you. Over the several years I have been doing this, I presented it to Mr. Hopper. It's my pleasure to present this proclamation to Ms. Wade and recognize your contribution and your longevity and your prominence among this board as being chairman without ranker and in the best interest of our community. Thank you, Ms. Wade, and let me make this presentation. I would like also to recognize one who serves quietly but efficiently and that is Ron Washington, who is a council member who is the liaison from our council, and I want to recognize Ron's service and appreciate what he does and how he goes about his business in a quiet and diplomatic way. Thank you very much, Mr. Washington. Ms. Mathis, I'll turn the program back to you.
Thank you. I would like to acknowledge all the wonderful artwork and I know that board members, you would wish to do the same, that our schools are prepared for you to acknowledge your hard work, to acknowledge your dedication. You may want to show the picture that they painted of you because it looks so much like you. I will share mine, I am very proud of mine. And it's truly a work of art. I think it just gives some recognition to our students for all that they have done tonight. In your boardroom, when you ate, there were letters and acknowledgements everywhere.
And there's second graders that did this. I mean, the artistry, this is really something. I wish I looked this good.
And hats off and great appreciation to the teachers who helped organize the kids to do these things. We really appreciate them. It just makes my evening every January when I can come in and look at these cards and letters and books and pictures. And I know it's not done all by itself, so thank you all.
And this is just one little sample of lots of wonderful artwork and we have such creative students and teachers, it's really exciting to get to see what they do. And I really appreciate all the time that everybody else spent to do this and I really feel kind of guilty because we have the easy job compared to what all the teachers do and the administration and the students, you know, they work hard every day.
They do.
And so I feel a little bit guilty for having so much effort spent to thank us when we really just need to be thanking them all the time.
Thank you, both of you ladies. I think the rest of the board echoes your sentiment and certainly appreciate all the hard work that went into making us feel really good during this School Board Week. At this time, it gives me great pleasure to recognize a board member that has served with honor, continues to serve with honor, and works very hard. This says, TSB, Tennessee School Board Association, membership in the Tennessee School Board Association Quarter Century Club, if that tells you anything. This is presented to Mr. David Hopper in appreciation of 25 years of dedicated service. That's saying a lot about a school board member when you dedicate 25 years of your life to helping better our system. Thank you, Mr. Hopper, and it's with great pleasure I present this to you. Would you like to say anything, Mr. Hopper?
Thank you, Ms. Wade. As I've said to some of you before, there's few things in life that you can do that will make an impression and last beyond your lifetime, and education is one of those things. I hope I've made a small contribution to the children of Murfreesboro and to our school system. It's been an enjoyable time to do this and I hope we have continued to have such great schools that we've had in the past and in the future, and I look forward to being part of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hopper.
Hi, our communications. Twice a year for at least the last 10 years and probably longer than that, you all have gotten to hear about our teachers applying for and receiving mini grants from the Business Education Partnership. The major benefactor for the mini grants all of this time has been Nissan USA. Tonight, to commemorate that, we have invited a representative from Nissan to present a check to the Chamber's BEP to represent all the money that they have given to help provide extra opportunities for children. First of all, I'd like to ask Laura Beth Jackson, now Laura Beth is with the Business Education Partnership, and she is going to introduce to you the person here from Nissan who will talk about what Nissan's efforts have been in these mini grants. Laura Beth, welcome.
Thank you, Marilyn, and thank you all for letting us come here this evening to be before you all. Thank you for your support of the BEP. We have enjoyed working with you and working with so many of your teachers in our programs. Tonight, we have Ms. Julie Cochran from Nissan with America, who is presenting a check to the Business Education Partnership of $75,000 from the Nissan Foundation. These go towards mini grants for teachers, classroom teachers, that provide grants of up to $500 for classroom projects to encourage hands-on, real-world learning in the classroom to make it easier for teachers and encourage them the excellence they already achieve. So, thank you, Julie.
Once again, we're very, very pleased to be able to make this presentation to not only you, the school board, but to all the teachers of Murfreesboro City Schools. Education to Nissan, we like to think of ourselves as continuous learners at work and so we truly support the role of education in our communities. Thank you for all you do and for all the teachers in the room, we really appreciate it.
Ms. Mathis, do you want to join?
Sure.
One, two, three. One more time, one, two, and, let me do one more. One, two, and. Oops, I'm sorry, one more time. I promise this is it. One, two, that's right, one, two, and. There we go.
Yes, thank you.
And you will actually find a list, or you want to talk a little bit about that? Just very quickly, I know you have a full agenda, but I put at each of your seats a packet of the Business Education Partnership's really report of programming for the past year and really since it started. At the beginning, there's more, most recent report on our programming, followed by a kind of blue sheet with a quickie notes on our programs and a kind of return on investment on which you all have contributed to us and what we hope we can give back to you in the quality of our programming. There's following that is a little bit larger packet with a report on programs since the BEP started and how they've grown and the type of people that have come through, the educators that have come through, the students who have come through our programs. And then at the very back, there is, most exciting, a list of Murfreesboro City School teachers who have received mini grants in their classrooms in fall 2008. So, they should be putting them pretty much into effect by now or a little bit later this semester. Probably the biggest, just the biggest note, what we have had Murfreesboro City School students do in our programs is the State Farm Center Business Camp, which is an entrepreneurial program in the summers, of course our mini grants, and then many of your teachers have come through our VC3 Math and Science Camp in the academy in the summer for them, an in-service program where they can learn about the application of math and science in the business world. So, thank you all again for your support, we appreciate each and every one of you, appreciate what you do and for your support of us, and especially just thank you to Ms. Mathis for her leadership and for serving on our board and contributing so much to our organization. So, thank you all.
And behind your agenda, you will find a list of the teachers who received mini grants this fall, and I do want to read their names because we're very proud of them. It takes a lot of time to write a grant and they're not always funded. Bellwood Bowden Preschool had three awarded and two of them were awarded to the same teacher, Lana Hurt earned two awards for her classroom, Jacqueline Simmons-Morris. At Casey Lane, we had one, Felicia Jackson. At the Discovery School, Stacy Burke, Mary Cunningham, and Teresa McCarthy. Hobgood Elementary had five, two went to one teacher, Rebecca Green earned two, Christina Lopez, and then Melvin Prager earned two, so we congratulate them. Mitchell Nielsen Primary had three, Leah Barch, Kathy Crabtree, Shannon Minner. Northfield had five, Sherry Arnett, Sherrell Ford Jackson, Kelly Harris, Lori Hollis, and Diana Polk. And Scales had three with Angela Huff, Christina Maddox, and Jeanetta Davenport. And I again thank our teachers for going above and beyond to really make a lot of special opportunities for children. Next on the communication list, we have a presentation of basketball trophies to our tournament winners. Crystal Rochon, our supervisor, VSP, and Dan Boe Shears, our basketball coordinator, will make these presentations. Crystal and Mr. Dan Boe Shears.
Good evening. Our basketball season came to a close back in December, right before we let out for break, and I would just like to thank all of the principals and assistant principals and coaches for their hard work and dedication. At this time, however, we did want to recognize our tournament winners from our basketball season. We will be calling our principals and our coaches, the majority of those were able to join us tonight to receive their trophies. For the girls, third place went to Arma Segal. Our head coach there was Jenna Stensel and Ms. Tuckson will be coming forward. Boys, third place went to Scales and our head coach there was Quentin Mastin. You have to follow Dan, he's moving around. Our girls, second place went to Casey Lane. Our head coach was Shawn Brown. Boys, second place, Northfield. Our head coach there was Donald Whitmore. Girls, first place winners were Scales and our head coach is Eric Bonner, however Quentin Mastin's going to be accepting that for him tonight. And our boys, first place, John Pitter. And our head coach is, we had two coaches there, Anita Spann and Justin Few. Thank you very much.
By the way, we will be providing you with a financial update on our basketball program next month. We need to get everything in and make sure it's correct so that we have not forgotten, and I know you need that information. Next, we want to recognize a very special person, Mr. Kent Siler, if you would please come to the podium. Kent has served on our Community Advisory Council for a pretty good length of time and I'm going to ask that Nancy Phillips, your board representative to our Community Advisory Council, do the honors in recognizing you, Mr. Siler.
On behalf of the board, it is with pleasure that I present to Mr. Kent Siler this plaque in appreciation for his service and dedication and time to the Community Advisory Council. And with your permission, I'll read it. Presented with appreciation and recognition to J. Kent Siler for commitment to the Community Advisory Council, Murfreesboro City Schools, member since 2002 and chair 2004 through 2008. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and Nancy, please say hello to Murf, wish she could have been here, could have joined us here. I want to join Mayor Bragg in thanking the board. As many of you know, I've worked for Congressman Gordon since 1985 and I know a little bit about what it takes to serve and I don't know that there's a tougher job, really, than serving on your local school board. It's tough, but it can be incredibly rewarding and I thank you for being willing to do that. I've had two children come through the system that have really done well and benefited from the school, from the ESP program, and I very much appreciate being able to give back some things and serve. I hope in the future, I know things as Murfreesboro changes, can continue to become more and more challenging, and I hope that you will continue to be innovative, be aggressive, and give us the kind of school system you've given us over the time that I've had children here and I thank you for that work. Thanks.
And you'll note from your agenda that we're not letting Mr. Siler off just because he's not serving as chair, he will continue to serve on the executive board for the Community Advisory Council. And Dr. Patrick McCarthy will replace Mr. Siler as our chair of our Community Advisory Council effective February 1. Just a note to let you know, an AT&amp;T grant has been awarded to MTSU for math and science. It'll be a partnership between Hobgood and MTSU and the Discovery School and MTSU, and the amount of the grant is for $19,774. Will provide teacher training and science and provide accompanying science materials, and you will hear more about this later, it's just been awarded, and so when it really gets going and we have some great news to report, we'll bring a report back to you. And to let you know that you all have received many thank you notes for the token of appreciation given to employees in recognition of American Education Week back in November, and also for the holiday treat provided to all employees in December. We congratulate Irma Segal kindergarten teacher Rita Lester. She's been named Walmart's Teacher of the Year and being named that brings $1,000 to her school, Irma Segal Elementary. And we thank Gail Porterfield, Gail is a teacher, a second grade teacher at Mitchell Nielsen Primary. She and her husband Scott Porterfield in Kroger Store have donated earth-friendly bags to Mitchell Nielsen Primary, and these bags are used by students to carry their instruction materials as they travel among their three second-grade co-op classes. They have a traditional, a constructivist, and an in-tech co-op class, and I'm sure you'll be hearing more about that tonight.
That's a fascinating program.
It is, in Ms. Newell's report, at least I hope so. Okay. And we thank Cull's Department Store, a donation of $500 to our community outreach program. And to remind you, our rezoning hearings are scheduled as follows. Monday, February 2nd, we'll have a rezoning hearing at John Pitter Elementary, and on Tuesday, February 3rd, at Scales. And Mr. Anderson has coordinated this and is sending letters home with the students who would be affected by the rezoning to make sure that they can be in attendance, should they wish to be. Advertisements we put in the paper, and I believe he's running an ad on, do you want to tell a little bit about all the ways that you're communicating with people to let them know about our hearing?
Sure, we're having ads running in both of the local newspapers, tomorrow's the first one, and then Saturday, and then on Sunday, we will have those ads running. We're also, tonight at 10 o'clock, the website will be up with information on it with a special rezoning icon people can click on and go right to that page, and there's a special email address established so they can email directly dealing with this issue to us. We also have it on Channel 3 and it's going to be on the radio stations, so we've got it covered pretty much everywhere we can, plus personal notes. The meetings start at 6 o'clock on Monday, next Monday and Tuesday night.
And the last item is to thank our board chair, Mary Wade, for being the featured guest on Murfreesboro for the month of January, so she started the year off right, and to commemorate that, we have a short clip to feature our chair. Let it roll.
Hi, welcome to Adventures in Murfreesboro. I'm Steve and this is Murf.
Hi, Steve, hi, Murf, how are you?
Give me an B.
B.
Give me an O.
O.
Give me an R.
R.
Give me an E.
E.
Give me a D.
D.
What does it spell?
Board.
Say it again.
Board.
Louder.
Board.
One more time.
Board. Murf, what in the world are we doing?
Why, we're cheering. I thought this would be a really nice way to welcome you since you're the cheer woman for the board.
Murf.
Oh, yes, Ms. Mary, oh, Ms. Mary, let me ask you, do you like pom-poms?
Murf.
You know, I wasn't sure about the pom-poms at first, but now I really like them.
Murf.
Hey, what about the megaphones? I know, I know, why don't you do one of your cheers for us?
Murf.
Oh, yes, Ms. Mary, was that your cheer?
I am not the cheer woman for the board.
No?
I am the chairwoman for the Board of Education.
Board of Education? How could anyone be Board of Education?
Murf, let me explain. The Board of Education is a group of people elected to help guide and direct our school system. We try to make schools the best they can be.
So, you don't cheer for them?
Well, in a way I do, because I make sure that everybody knows how great our students are, our teachers, our central office staff, our parents, we want everybody to know how great we are in Murfreesboro City.
You're a natural.
No.
Oh, yes.
You're almost as good as Murf.
She was, she was great. She was a tremendous guest.
I do want to thank Murf and Ms. Phillips for asking me to be a part. It was a lot of fun. I hope in the very near future, each school board member gets a chance to come and have a little fun with Murf. I think everybody deserves their time.
Give you a heads up. In February, we have judge, Circuit Judge Don Ash, and he has an encounter with red clown noses, so I'll tell you about that later. Check that out.
Those are all the items of communication, Miss Chairwoman Wade.
Yes, ma'am. We have one consent item tonight. I need a motion to approve this consent item.
One moment.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, call the roll, please, ma'am.
Dr. Andrews?
Hi.
Dr. Buttrum?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Mathis, action item?
Yes, your first action item is for you to approve your revised master plan reflecting the changes that you approved already at your December 2nd board retreat. You asked that even though you'd approved all the changes, you wanted us to bring back a corrected copy and present it to you and let you approve it again. So, this behind tab two shows your revised master plan.
I am hoping that each board member has had a chance to read over this prior to the meeting. Did anyone find anything that maybe we needed to, that wasn't what you thought you said? If not, will entertain a motion.
I'm sorry.
Is there a, there's been a motion and a second to accept this and I'd like to thank all the board members for their hard work and the staff that helped us out doing this and I'm glad we've had a chance to get it done. So, Ms. Ridley, if you would, please call the roll.
Dr. Andrews?
Can I just ask something first?
Sure.
Is this on the web or could we put it on the web, do you think?
Yes.
Is it on the web?
Cheryl, is it on the web?
On the internet.
She says it is, I thought it was, but I want to make sure.
Okay, so we'll put the revised one up.
And we'll have the revised.
Okay, aye, thank you.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttrum?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Your second action item is to approve revisions to our 2009, 2010 traditional and alternative calendars. You had approved our alternative and traditional calendars at a time when the state had not set the testing window for TCAP. Now that they have set it and because they have changed it, we need to change our spring break. The two, the spring break I am recommending for each of the calendars does coincide with Rutherford County's spring break, and you'll find these revised calendars behind tab three. The spring break for 2009-10 would be April 12th through 16th, and on the calendar, it had been, the way it is right now, it had been March 29th through April 2nd. And then on the alternative calendar, recommending a
And then on the alternative calendar, recommending a spring break that would be April 12 through the 23rd, with one week, the first week, April 12 through 16 coinciding with Rutherford County's week of spring break.
What kind of input did we have from the Calendar Committee?
The principals have reviewed and approved this as far as the MEA Calendar Committee. I did have input from some folks, but no official input.
So as a whole, we are in agreement with this calendar, correct?
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Our principals unanimously approved it.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis.
After we twisted a few arms.
I don't think we had to do that very hard.
No, there was no twisting of arms, actually.
Mr. Campbell?
What are dates for Taranova testing in 2009 and '10?
It's... It will be March 22 through April 9 is our window, and it's a 15-day window. This year, we have a 20-day window, and so they changed it to just a smaller window, and it's March 22 through April 9.
Will we begin testing before the Good Friday?
No.
Or have you decided that yet?
Yes, everything will be completed before our spring break and Good Friday.
Does it answer for you, Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Are there any more questions about the calendar? If not, we'll entertain... Wait a minute. Mr. Campbell, do you have a question?
No, I'm just... I see it now, written down at the bottom.
That's all right.
Well, and we may push that... We may push our own testing window a little bit later, too, after Good Friday. We have actually not set our own testing window for the next year.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so that could change a little bit. I'll certainly get input from all of our folks on that one.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Is there a motion?
I move we approve the modifications on the calendars.
Is there a second? There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, would you please call the roll?
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttrum?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Your first report for tonight is a report of our FY08 audit by Dell Crouslin. Dell is the Managing Director for Crouslin and Associates, and his organization performed our audit for FY08. So, Mr. Crouslin, would you please come to the podium?
Good evening. We've got a lot of material to cover, so I will go as quick as I can. If at any time anyone has a question, please feel free to stop me. What we're going to be covering is this booklet that's got almost 100 pages. It's a report to the members of the school board. And let me just tell you first, without you even looking, what's in it. What's in the booklet is our communications with the school board, which we are required to communicate to the person, the group responsible for the school system. It also has the central office financial statements and the activity financial statements and appropriate letters of internal control and so forth. So we'll start with... We'll go through this booklet, the first section, which is called Communications with the School Board. First of all, we have an unqualified opinion, and I'm going to summarize, so again, interrupt me. We have an unqualified opinion on all the financial statements and on the central school system. There were no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over internal control. The relevance of that to you is you get grants, you get federal funds. We tested that under generally accepted auditing standards and what they call A133, which is governmental auditing standards, and we found no exceptions and no findings, so that's We did test the internal control and what they call compliance with the generally accepted standards and in compliance with A133, which are a special set of rules that the federal government requires us to follow. In note B to the financial statements are the accounting policies which the school system has. We noted no transactions during the year which did not... was not supported by appropriate accounting policies and principles. On page 3, management needs to make certain estimates in the financial statements. The primary area that they make estimates in your financials is in the lives of the capital assets. We examine those lives, and we concur with them. In the middle of page 3 is some items of significance to your financials. In the past, land buildings and side improvements, which we'll... are called in school facilities, have historically been purchased by and indebted to the city of Murphysboro. Prior to the end of the year, the state came down with a ruling in order to meet the requirements of Audit Guide State and Local Governments, they began to record all Boards of Education under their jurisdiction to record the financial statements, I mean, the property assets and the debt in your financial statements, even though you do not have title to those assets or actually have the liability to the debt. See some blanks. That's not... Doesn't make a lot of sense. You don't have title, but in governmental standards, you do use those assets and run in the school system. They're here, they're part of your activities, so we're required to put them in there. What that meant to the district was there were 62.7 million of capital assets and 34 million of debt which was recorded in your financial statements. What we did was restate the prior year beginning balances, and that resulted in you having an increase in your net assets of $28 million. Additionally... There's any questions on that? Okay. Additionally, you adopted what they call GASB 45, which is reporting for post-benefit retirements other than pensions during the current year. You obtained an actuarial report, and you're required to make a current year contribution to equal the actuarial contribution, and that required you to record $222,000 liability on your financial statements. So really, those two items, the recording of the property, plant, and equipment, and the debt on your books, and the recording of the other post-retirement benefits in your financials and setting up that liability were the two most important items that happened in your financial statements this year.
Is that a one-time liability for all of the future?
The liability will continue to be monitored, but it's a one-time to set it up. Next year, they do another actuarial computation, and you will only record the difference. So if it's 222 this year and it's 240 next year, you just record the difference in it, up or down.
Does the 220 have to be the annual amount, or is that amortized?
That's just the liability at this point in time, at the date of the financial statements.
The future liability?
Yes. It's the best estimate of the actuaries at that point in time. During the year, there were some adjustments that we proposed which we required to mention to you. And first of all, I want to say that some things happened two years ago that really didn't affect you last year because we didn't have any adjustments, but there was this document called SAS 112, and what it did was lower the threshold for reporting an internal control situation or any kind of entries, and it took it to a very low level. The first thing I'd like to say, there are no instances of non-compliance or deficiencies at the central school system level. Second, the adjustments we had to make did not relate any cash receipts or cash dispersals of activity funds. What they related to was internal control over external reporting, and particularly the cutoff in a state rule that if you have a receivable that's not collected within 30 days, you can't record it as receivable. So if you collect the receivable in 40 days, not 30, it's not a receivable. So we have to make adjustments for those. So that's what the $16,000 is related to. And because of that, we had significant deficiency in financial reporting on the activity funds. Now, we still gave a clean opinion on all the numbers, all the cash receipts, all the cash dispersals, but there were these cutoff issues in the 30-day rule that we had to have a significant deficiency because of the new standards. We did not have any disagreements with management during the year. We have included in the pack the representational letter that we got from management regarding the financial statements, and that's for yours to review to see what they represented to us. We did not identify any fraudulent or illegal acts during our work, and there really were no findings in our A133 work. In Appendix A, that's... I'm back on Appendix A, which is on page 6, is our management letter. We had two items which related to the approval of journal entries, and we had a record-keeping situation on journal entries for the school nutrition invoices. And basically, it's retaining them and filing them in a central location. We found them all during the course of our audit, but they weren't as well organized as we think they should. So that's the two items in our management letter. Are there any questions at this point? In regard to the central office on page... Can't find our accountants' report. It's on page 3 and 4. You do have a clean opinion under what we call generally accepted auditing standards and generally accepted accounting principles and under A133, which is the governmental rules. It's a clean opinion, and it's long, it's almost two pages. The reason it's so long is it has a paragraph in there about the accounting changes, and then it has an internal control paragraph. It then talks about management discussion, which management prepares, but we just review, we do not audit, and then it talks about the governmental issues. So this is as clean as a two-page opinion can be. I know it's very complicated, but in the accounting world, it's clean. Pages 15 through 14 is management's discussion of the financial statements. On page 15 is the statement of net assets, and I've already covered the two changes there, which you'll note your capital assets went up about 60-something million, your debt went up, and then about 30-something million, and your unrestricted assets went up. To note, this year, on page 17, you did have an increase in net assets of about 1.1 million, which increased your unrestricted assets to 5.5 million. So in a normal commercial world, that's called net income. In your case, it's increasing net assets, so you had an increase this year. Really, on page 18 is the general purpose school fund column, which again shows an increase, a little different because of the accounting methods that they're on, of about 1.5 million, and your fund balance increased there correspondently. You go all the way back to page 64 through 67, you have our opinions on reports on internal control over financial reporting and compliance, and our reports on compliance over each of the major programs and internal control under the governmental grants, which means we go through an elaborate testing process where we test your grants, and we ended up finding no exceptions or had no findings this year. So again, even though those are two-page reports, they are clean. All the way in the very last half is our report on the school activity funds. The school activity funds are not... They're reported on a comprehensive basis of accounting which the state designates and not under generally accepted accounting principles. So the opinion is worded a little strange in some places in that it says it's not in accordance with GAAP. Not to be concerned, in the next paragraph, it says that it is fairly presented on the basis of accounting. So that's a... Again, that is a standard report which the state requires us to say and to give, and it relates to the fact that the activity funds are not on the accrual basis of accounting, they're more on a cash basis of accounting. And we are required to give an opinion both on the combined financial statements and the individual schools, which we did. And really, unless you want me to talk a lot more about your financials, which I can, that's all I really had to present. Are there any questions of anyone? I know it's a lot of material to absorb.
Thank you so much. Unless David or some of the others have any questions, and I see none, thank you.
Well, you should just consider yourself that you've got a clean bill of health, so... And we appreciate you letting us do the examination this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Crouslin.
Thank you to Ms. Bell for all of her hard work.
Mr. Anderson?
You all worked very hard. Thank you for that clean bill. I want to thank all of our school secretary, the school bookkeepers of activity funds. They also reflect well on us, and we... All of our bookkeepers upstairs, and that answer to GoLena, do an excellent job. I think Ms. Bell is with us tonight. Ms. Bell, would you stand, let us say thank you to you.
She certainly does coordinate this for us, and as you know, Mr. Anderson makes sure that we have money left over at the end of the year that we can put into fund balance, does a great job working with everyone and coordinating all of our administrative services. I want to thank him.
Your next report is a school report. We love to hear about children, and I think after seeing all these gifts that you've received tonight, after we talk about money, it's really fun to see where the money goes. And Ms. Robyn Newell is going to report to us about Mitchell-Nelson Primary School. All the good things going on out there. Principal Robyn Newell. Looks like we're going to have a joint report with Mr. Greg Lyles, the principal of Mitchell-Nelson Elementary.
Thank you.
So welcome you two.
First, we want to thank the board for the job you do and the support you give, which enables us to do the job we do for the boys and girls in this community. Ms. Newell and I feel very privileged to have some of the greatest employees anywhere, teachers and support personnel. And so hopefully, tonight, we will give you a snapshot of some of the things that occur at the Mitchell-Nelson campuses.
Yes. Because we're across the street from each other, we have a unique opportunity for collaboration that other schools might not enjoy. We get to share programs and events, we get to share collaboration among our teachers and professional development opportunities, and we get to share families, which is the best thing. So instead of us doing it one at a time, we wanted to combine our videos and show you how we work together. So we'll let the children tell you about our schools.
Welcome to Mitchell-Nelson Primary, the best and only primary school in Murphysboro. We want to show you what makes MMP the best place to be. Every morning, Ms. Newell is standing out front even when it's raining. She gives me a big hug every day. She opens the door and gives us a big hug. It feels nice, and it makes my day. This is my first grade class. We are having our morning meeting. We greet and share due and activity and write a morning message. Mrs. Myers' class loves morning meetings. We combine exercising and math together. Math plus exercises equals take 10. We are active while we are learning. We love raising our heart level. We love our walking track. The name of our track is Parks Path. Seven laps equal an aisle. It's easier to have all the reading groups with two teachers. Each teacher gets to listen to the other teacher, and all the students get to hear a different voice. Having two teachers is like having an octopus for a teacher. There are more hands to help.
There are more hands to help.
Mr. Nilius comes in every morning and helps our class with reading. Mr. Nilius and Mrs. Miller work together and plan great workstations for us. We have so much fun in reading.
We enjoy our daily math warm-ups. We use hundreds charts, number tiles, and skillboards. It makes math time so much fun.
People from MTSU helped us with a special reading night for some special students. Parents got a free meal and kids got a free picture book. MTSU helped us with some fun activities. Thank you so much, MTSU.
I like the classroom co-op because in the traditional room, there's books, math, and in the technology room, there's fun learning games on the computers, and there's lots of just fun learning games. And in the group room, I like the art because I really like to do art, and it's pretty fun.
I love the classroom co-op because, because in the traditional room is where we have the books and writing, and in the group room, we have more of the games, exploring the games. And then in here, we work on the computers and play games.
Classroom co-op is kind of like being rich when you have three rooms to have going. You have more stuff to do and more things to learn.
They taught us like you have to rob, drop, and roll and stuff, like you have to rob, drop, and roll, and you have fire on you because you want to stay safe. Whenever you smell smoke, you have to go outside whenever there's a fire because fire can burn stuff, and it can give you, like, it can burn you and stuff. It was really fun, and all of us had really fun listening to music. Actually, us were singing three songs and stuff. It was really fun every time we'd sing the song. Sometimes we messed up, people made noises, we'd have to start over sometimes. But it was really fun, and we're really proud to do three CDs and people hearing it and
We love to stay after school and read. Read stands for learning through enrichment and play. My favorite thing we do is science experiments. Check out this awesome experiment.
Students at Mitchell Nelson Primary enjoy working with the elementary school across the street. Many of our classes travel across the street to work with the older children. We really like working with the bigger students. M&amp;P and M&amp;E enjoy working together.
From the beginning kindergarten through second grade at M&amp;P, we look forward to going to school at M&amp;E. It is exciting to finally get to cross the street to the big school.
Wow, wouldn't it be fun to have a bridge connecting our schools?
Even though we don't have a bridge connecting M&amp;E and M&amp;P, we have classroom buddies that often get together and do lots of activities together.
This school year brought with it many changes for M&amp;E and M&amp;P. Many of these changes are a result of the subcommittees of the Flip This School Initiative. FLYPS stands for Families and School Leadership Integration and Involvement Project. The subcommittees are Climate 911, Curb Appeal, CSI, which means Community and School Initiative, Engaging Students and Families, and Smart School Attributes.
One new initiative this year was an implementation of a uniform dress code. We feel that improved student behavior and a warm, inviting school climate can be attributed to this initiative. Don't we look good?
Our teachers have worked hard to help us learn the school-wide procedures and routines. We have practiced, practiced, and practiced. In an effort to continue addressing the academic needs of all students, the inclusion model for special education was developed this year. Our special education teachers, Title I teachers, educational assistants, and special area teachers do a great job in offering academic assistance to students in the regular classroom setting.
Ms. Melissa Snyder from our central office also offers academic assistance to some of our students three days a week. We always look forward to her coming to Mitchell Nelson.
Mitchell Nelson is fortunate to be a recipient of a 21st Century Learning Grant. Our program is known as Project SOAR, Special Opportunities for Acceleration and Reinforcement. In an effort to address the academic needs of our students, we have approximately 129 children enrolled in this program, which receive academic assistance from certified teachers after school on a daily basis. We have revised our schedule in an effort to offer homework assistance, tutoring, and enrichment opportunities for children after school.
At M&amp;E, we are fortunate to have the space to allow our science specialist, Mr. Lewis McLean, to set up a lab in our school. Students from M&amp;E and M&amp;P receive hands-on experience in the lab. This lab is loaded with a plethora of creepy crawly creatures.
We also have enough space for Ms. Candy Clifford, Community Outreach Coordinator, to set up a room to serve Mitchell Nelson families. Frequent giveaways are held, and families are allowed to select clothing and household items they need.
Parent coffees are held once a month to give parents an opportunity to meet with the principal, school counselor, and outreach coordinator.
One exciting event as a part of the Flip This School Initiative, being sponsored by the Mitchell Nelson Schools, is a parent extravaganza on February 26th. At that time, parents will be invited to come in to choose sessions of their choice. There'll be a variety of sessions lasting for 30 minutes each, dealing with subjects such as internet safety for kids, how to buy your first house, I care for children, how to talk to your child's teacher, the special education process, what is balanced literacy, helping your child with words their way, children of divorce, math at home, and many other important sessions that parents will be able to gain information from. There'll be fun food and lots of activities on this February 26th event. Remember, we're all working together to bring together our community.
Another new program started at the Mitchell Nelson Schools is the Amazing Alumni Recognition Program. Each week, an alumni is brought in to tour our building and talk to students about what it was like when they attended the school.
For the past two years, we've had the opportunity to offer a science club after school. Club Neutron always allows students to experience science in new and different ways.
We have attempted to give you a snapshot of all the great things that happen at Mitchell Nelson Schools. Our schools are a place where each student is given the opportunity to achieve academic
And we do want to thank our technology support.
Absolutely.
Trent Cheves and Mickey Brooks, thank you so much.
Thank you all so very much. That was an excellent report. Our next report, Chairwoman Wade and members of the board. We are pleased to report to you our winter benchmark results showing the percent of students who scored at a proficient or advanced level in grades three through six on our Think Link predictive assessment, formative assessment test. We actually find that this assessment is supposed to predict within an 80% to 90% accuracy of how well our students will do on TCAP when they were given a TCAP in April. So if you look behind tab four, you will find a chart, and we also have it shown on the screen, that shows you how well students did on the second benchmark. We give the Think Link three times a year, and the winter benchmark is the second benchmark, and then we'll have one more before our TCAP testing. Our instructional team, made up of Danielle Kaminski, Priscilla Van Teres, Crystal Rocham, Michelle Hummel, and then also Carol Stinson, who's with the State Technical Assistance Team, met with each principal to review the data for their school. We also reviewed each school's at-risk list of students who are at risk of failing. A very comprehensive review, and I'm going to ask Danielle to please come to the podium, Ms. Danielle Kaminski, and review our winter benchmark information with you that you will find behind tab four. Ms. Kaminski.
Good evening. I'm very pleased to be able to present our winter benchmark results based on our students' December predictive testing results. The winter benchmark is the first benchmark that is based on actual grade level standards for our students, and therefore is our first real predictor of success on the TCAP exam. I want to begin a little by giving you some background about how the system has been using the data throughout the year. As Ms. Mathis mentioned, Ms. Mathis, myself, Carol Stinson, the district stat, and the central office team, which Ms. Mathis just described to you, has met twice so far with building principals to review overall district as well as individual building data. During these meetings, we look at successes, we identify challenges, and we brainstorm solutions together. These predictive results indicate that MCS is meeting both state and federal annual yearly progress benchmarks at this point. And then as you can see from the chart, the AYP benchmark for reading language arts is 89% of students performing at the proficient or advanced levels, and the AYP benchmark for math is 86% of students performing at the proficient or advanced levels. And I'll just review what the chart says. In the area of mathematics, in the overall subgroup, MCS achieved at a 94.1% passing rate. In the white subgroup, we achieved a 96.1% passing rate. In the Hispanic subgroup, we achieved a 93.3% passing rate. In the African-American subgroup, we achieved a 90.4% passing rate. In the Asian subgroup, a 94.2% passing rate. Economically disadvantaged, a 91.4% passing rate at this point. Limited English proficient, an 89.6% passing rate. And the special education, or students with disabilities subgroup, as it's called sometimes, achieved an 81.8% passing rate. In the area of reading language arts, overall, we have a 94.6% passing rate at this point. In the white subgroup, a 95% passing rate. In the Hispanic subgroup, an 87.7% passing rate. The African-American subgroup achieved a 91.6% passing rate. The Asian subgroup, a 95.5% passing rate. Economically disadvantaged, 92.8%. Limited English proficient in reading language arts, an 81% passing rate. And special education, an 88.2% passing rate. As you know, we were placed on the high priority list because of district performance in two of our subgroups on the spring TCAP exam. In the limited English proficient subgroup, you'll see in the area of mathematics, and you can see that we are currently meeting that benchmark with an 89.6% passing rate. And also, we were on high priority for our Hispanic students in the subject area of reading language arts, where we've achieved an 87.7% passing rate, which indicates that we will meet this particular benchmark if, at this point, through Safe Harbor or the confidence interval, we're very close. Of course, we hope to achieve AYP outright by April, and we have plenty of time to work on getting that up, and we're close, and we're very proud of that. Data indicates that we are also slightly behind in the benchmarks for our English language learners in the subject area of reading language arts, where we're currently showing an 81% passing rate. Although we are behind the benchmarks listed at the top of your chart, we will have met Safe Harbor if we hold at this, at this passing rate. So therefore, you can make AYP in three different ways, through, four different ways, actually outright, through Safe Harbor, confidence interval, or a projection. And so we will have met, we will be able to make this one through Safe Harbor if we maintain. For our students with disabilities in the subject area of reading language arts, we've achieved an 88.2% passing rate, indicating that we will also meet this one through our Safe Harbor. And students with disabilities in the subject area of mathematics, an 81.8, also through Safe Harbor at this point. Of course, we hope to achieve, where our goal is always to achieve, AYP outright by meeting those exact benchmarks by April. And that's why we do this predictive testing, to try to keep us informed in the areas that we need to strengthen within each building and with each individual student. We look at every individual student in every building. And that's, I think, probably the most important thing that you all need to know, and when you listen to the principal's report, they talk about what they are doing with individual students, one-on-one, in reviewing the testing information and in trying to help the students to improve. Most of all, we are pleased to report through this data that the initiatives and action steps that we are implementing through our TCSPP process are working. One area that our team has noted as a result of this process is an increase in collaboration that is taking place throughout our district. We really feel that the entire district has grown stronger through the process because of the increased collaboration, and we feel like the sharing between central office, buildings, staff members, principal to principal is really paying off. I want to take a moment to congratulate all of our teachers, our principals, our classified staff in the district, and all, and the central office team, everybody working together very hard for our students every day, and it really is making a difference. And if you join me in just giving them a round of applause.
We might add to that, thank you, students, for the excellent efforts that you've given. Students now are doing things like tracking their own progress in a lot of our schools, and I think when you hold them accountable, and they're seeing the progress they make, especially when they keep graphs of their progress, this really does add to them wanting to learn and to continuously improve. So we've got to thank our students for listening to their excellent teachers.
And it's great for their self-esteem when they see themselves reaching goals and progressing too. And just to echo that, you know, and thank you, Ms. Kaminski, for all your hard work and all of that.
Anybody have any questions for Ms. Kaminski?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment. I called Danielle today to ask about the scores, the benchmark scores that were from the first test back earlier on in the fall, and realizing that those tests through Think Link, if it's Link, if it's the fourth grade test, a lot of the first test is material, and the questions in the test relate back to what the student had the year before. And she, she was able to, and I know her schedule's busy, but she, but she did it. But as I look at a comparison between the first Think Link test given and the second, every category, there is an increase. And even though there may be a couple of places we're not reaching the benchmark status as of yet, hopefully will in the future, I certainly think it is a tribute to, particularly the teachers in the classroom, because even with all the support that we can get from central office and, but administrators and teachers, they're the ones out in the ditches, and they're the ones to be commended for the work that they have done so far in bringing it as far up as they have since the first test.
Absolutely. Really appreciate that. And I know our teachers do, they're really on the front lines, and they work really, really hard, and it's been really tough to, you know, hear that we're on this list when you're working so hard every day. So want to especially send a shout-out to our teachers and express our gratitude for the hard work they do every day. And like Ms. Mathis says, our students are even tracking and checking off as the teachers teach the standards. They check off, oh, look, we've met this standard, and it's really neat to see. So appreciate your time on this.
Mr. Campbell, thank you so much. You already addressed the question I had, which was, you know, how, how did it compare to, to earlier? And I, you know, really appreciate your statements. Thank you.
And we do always share the same information. One board member gets with all the rest. I'm sorry this came in late this afternoon, but we'll send that to you tomorrow.
Ms. Mathis, we do have copies, if you'd like.
On their desk.
Not on their desk, but we can, we can distribute that.
That would be, that would be good enough. Sorry, all of you did not get it prior to the meeting. I would like to make one other quick comment. If these were our scores in April for TCAP, and I probably already said this once, I'm going to say it again, we would have met all the No Child Left Behind benchmarks. So right now, we would be off the high priority list if these were our scores, if we can hold, even hold these until April. We've met it through either one of the four ways that Ms. Kaminski described a while ago. So we're very, we're very proud of this. I'm sorry we're celebrating so much tonight, but I think we have a reason to celebrate. And again, thank all of our hard-working instructional leaders in our schools and our teachers. And you, too, Ms. Kaminski. Our next report is our System Equity Assessment Committee report. You'll recall that this was on your agenda for your retreat in December, and we did not have a chance to report this, and Cheryl Harris will provide you this report.
Thank you, Ms. Mathis. Yes. This committee is a result of a request by Ms. Phillips at, at the July ninth meeting, when she stated that she would like to see a system-wide plan to address equality and equity throughout the system. She suggested a system-wide equity assessment be done, as there's a perception in the community that all schools are not equal. So Mrs. Mathis appointed this committee, as you see the members there. There were six central office staff and five principals. It was a very diverse group of principals. I want to mention this so that everyone would know that we got a good cross-section. Dr. Linda Clark, Dr. Jean Lloyd, Robin Newell, Barbara Sales, and Barbara Tuckson. And I want to explain the delay, even though we were given this assignment in July, and the first meeting was held September fourth. That was the beginning of school, and it was very difficult to try to get everybody together. As a matter of fact, it was noted here, Robin had a special meeting that day, so she couldn't even be there. But anyhow, we did manage to, to meet in September, and we discussed how we were going to get started, actually, because none of us really knew what your real intent was when we sat down. We said, why are we here? So we decided that before we could determine what kind of assessment should be done, we had to determine what equity was and agree on that. And I will tell you that getting eleven educators together, which is what it was, we started pulling out dictionaries, and we had chart paper, and we actually ended up voting on which definition of equity we, we would accept and go with. And so I have it defined for you, that equity should best be described, in a school situation this is, as meeting the needs of, needs of each school, a child, student at each school. And this was a consensus, and it was unanimous among all of us, that that's, we think, what you had in mind and what we had in mind when we talked about equity. Additionally, we decided that we couldn't achieve equality, that, that's just never going to be able to take place, just look at the different size of the schools, all the differences that occur, but equity can be achieved. And at this point, Mr. Anderson reminded us that, explained to us, that each school, the same amount of money is provided to each school because there is a standard basis of state formula for distribution of funds. So in a way, equity is already established in a, in a very menial way. It took quite a while for us to decide what equity is, it was, and what we were going to decide to agree to pursue. So the recommendations then on, on how we might investigate equity differences were all over the map. We decided that perhaps school visits would be the same, our school inventory, our parent surveys, and even the suggestion that maybe we could contact other school systems and see if they had an assessment already in place. This was about the time that the Mitchell Nielsen flipped this school project was, was begun. So there had been a survey established for that, so we checked it out to see, and we all looked at that to see if it might lend itself at all in giving the results that we wanted, and we found that it, it absolutely would not. As a matter of fact, our principals, after looking at it, decided it would probably create more confusion, and there would have to be a lot of explaining done to why we're, we're asking these questions and what it pertains to. And I guess the most significant fact that, that was rewarding to me in listening to these five principals all talk about their school, is that each one of them was very satisfied with their school and what they had to offer, and they're all very unique. And even though one of them might have a brand-new school, one of them had something else that that other school didn't have. So they were, they were all so proud, and I'm not sure that any one of them would have exchanged schools with the other, just because of the other need. And then we all were reminded, and I know that you all are aware of this, that according to national research, most parents are very pleased with their own child's school. They may be disappointed in education or a school system, but they're, in general, they're pleased with their schools. That's, I think that's a very positive concept that we all can take away from this. So before we dismiss, we decided that perhaps we should meet informally with you, Ms. Phillips, and discuss with you, see which path you would like for us to take. And then we were going to wait until after the board retreat, and after we had a chance, of course, this is the first time it's been presented to you all, to, to take our direction from you, to see if you all would like us to pursue this any further, to get input from you and the board. And as you know, with our new Citizens Advisory Council, we're going to have a new group of people coming on, and this might be something that you would like to pursue with that group. However, I do want to, to give you some more information that we found. In our own TICCP plan, and I know you all sleep with that at night, so you'll probably be able to find this, under equity and adequacy in resources, support, and personnel to our schools, you'll find an overview of basic information on the procedures that Murfreesboro City Schools uses for distributing title funds, for general purpose funds, for grant money that might come in, and even the use of our recent established city schools foundation. Along those lines, as far as equity goes, we also meet this with pupil teacher ratios, professional development opportunities, and by zoning. As a matter of fact, in the plan, there was some, it was some really interesting points that I'm going to quote directly from the plan, so that you can know for sure that they did a good job when they wrote this. "The autonomy and individuality of each school building is encouraged in the exploration of instructional methodologies that best meet the needs of the youngsters in the building. Principals and school improvement teams may request funds from the central office for experts in the field to assist them in meeting the needs of the learners at their campus, or for innovative staff development programming. Funding has been supportive of several innovative programs already in place in the system, such as assisting Hopgood in the quest to become a NASA Explorer School, integration of the PIDEA curriculum at Kason Lane Academy, support provided to Bradley Academy to become a choice school for arts integration, the development of the Discovery School for High Achievers, planning and financial support in the development of the alternative calendar schedule used for seven of our schools in the district, and assistance and support in the provision of a comprehensive preschool program for at-risk youngsters." So I think all of these, and many more initiatives, make it evident that Murfreesboro City Schools has processes in place and continues to strive to ensure equity and learning opportunities for all the students in our system. And so I'd like to offer to you all to give us some sort of a direction now in how you would like for us to proceed.
First, I want to thank you, Ms. Harris, and all your committee members for the time. I do think equity is an important issue, even if we explore it to discover that we are addressing equity in every way and every place, with every, with every school and every student, and, and I hope that's our outcome. And, but I do think that your suggestion is a good one. I think the next step would be to present it to our community advisory council and get input from parents and teachers and community members outside the actual school system, and get a sense of, of, of their feelings about this. I, I think it's an important issue, and it's important, it's worth exploring. It's worth exploring and, and then having a full exposure of, of how we are. I don't expect that we'll find any equity issues, but if we do, then we can take care of them and address them and, and be very responsible to our citizens.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you.
Your next information, or it's actually a discussion item, discussion of revisions to board policies. You will find Board Policy Two behind tab two, Rules of Order, and also Board Policies Seven behind tab two, and also examples for ways to revise these two policies. These policies are also put in here as a result of discussion that you had at your retreat, that you did not, that you were not able to finish, and I think you wanted some more time on. Ms. Baker has studied these and written revisions as possibilities for you, and going to ask her to give us some introductory remarks, if you would, please.
Okay. The proposed revisions that you see before you for BO two, Rules of Order, and BO seven, the Agenda Preparation Dissemination, those are revisions based on numerous comments that you provided at various board meetings. I believe this discussion initially started at one of the first board meetings after the most recent election. It continued to the first retreat and the second retreat, and now it's been boiled down to these revisions. So what I need from the board in order to create a policy that could be in a final format for you to take action on, is to know what, if any, of these items that have been included in these policies you want to keep or discard. You may want to go through each section individually, or just if particular board members have particular items they have of interest that they want to discuss, bring those to my attention.
Are there any board members with any questions or anything you want to address to Ms. Baker?
Are we doing this one policy at a time, or?
It would be nice. I wouldn't, I'd do them one at a time with her.
I'd suggest we'll start with the first one in the packet, Board Policy Two, Rules of Order.
All right. I see no change, at least I don't see any changes in the board members. We don't see any changes need to be made with this one.
So is everyone in, would want me to bring this to you at the next board meeting to take action on as drafted?
Can you make, or do you have any suggestions, Ms. Baker, as to any changes in this policy that would make it use, more user-friendly than what you've already written?
Now, this, this draft includes all of the changes that I would have, that I've recommended to you over the various meetings, based on your comments and some of the concerns y'all raised.
Do we need to vote on any twenty individually? We do, I move that we accept this one, which is written.
Is this just a chance to examine, or are we voting?
No.
This is the examination, and we'll bring it back at the next board meeting.
Yes, this was for more discussions, since you didn't get to completely discuss it at the board retreat.
Okay.
Now, I'll bring it to you as an action item at the next board meeting for a final decision.
Now, we won't need to go through each line or each subsection separately, just each revision separately, is that what we were?
Yes, it, it, it depends on you. If there's a particular line item that you would like to discuss, please discuss that now.
Is there anything in motions or voting method, conflicts of interest, is there anything you see that you would like for Mrs. Baker to address at this time?
I just have one. Are we talking about all of them right now?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I just have a comment about the Agenda Preparation. It, it sort of totally leaves it to the discretion of the director. Can, does that, should that not also involve the, the chairwoman?
Are you talking about the Rules of Order?
I'm talking about the Agenda Format, Agenda Preparation.
Are you on the BO seven?
Uh, yeah, BO seven, uh-huh.
Part two, the part two section.
Yeah, I know it mentions that, that you would consult with the board chair.
And that's, that's, that's the same as how the Agenda Preparation has been in the past.
Okay.
It, that, that is really not a change in this revision.
It's just a clarification of how it has been occurring. Okay.
Is that state law?
Yes, it's in, in state law, it says that the director, in consultation with the board chair, will develop the agenda. And this, and also, as you may recall from the memo that I gave you relative to how I came about these revisions, based on your comments, I went back and looked at what the Tennessee School Board Association recommended and what other school districts in our, in Middle Tennessee and of a similar size did, and pulled from those policies.
I have a concern about Section Three, the Agenda Approval of BO seven, the proposed revisions. It says the first item on the agenda shall be the approval of the agenda. I have a question for clarification, please. Now, at that point, if, for example, someone said, I wanted to take something off the agenda, can they, can they do that, or you're just approving what's on the agenda, or is that a, or can people add or subtract things from the agenda at that time?
Under the approval of the agenda, if someone wants to, for example, rearrange the order of the agenda, which you've been doing without an official item on the agenda, the board could vote as to whether they're in agreement that they want to rearrange the order. The, the board can take a vote as to whether they want to add an item, if one board member wants to add an item. It can be put to a vote as to whether the board as a whole wants the agenda changed in any way prior to that meeting. And I know y'all have discussed at the various meetings that, as it stands, board members can request that items be added to the agenda up to the day of the meeting, and I know y'all have often been given revised agendas when you've come to the meeting. So I don't know if that is still a concern, if that's an item that everyone still desires to have in the policy, as it seems to have been working in practice well without that particular item.
Well, I, colleagues, I have a concern about that, because to me, that's just bringing something to the board that no one has had time to prepare for, or possibly no one's had time to prepare for, or taking something off the agenda that our staff members have spent many hours preparing for, you know, being paid. spent many hours preparing for, you know, being paid by taxpayer dollars. And so if they've prepared a report, and I would like to make sure that they have the opportunity, and on the other hand, I don't want anyone blindsided by something being added to the agenda without anyone having time to prepare for it.
I, I think that this was, was sort of a compromise that we came up with, that there were some people who wanted to bring new things up, and there were people who wanted to make sure that we were prepared. So I, it's kind of awkward, but I guess it's a way for us to be able to vote and say whether or not we would like to add that particular item. We, we can vote it down if we feel like we would be unprepared, and it would not be discussed at that meeting. So I guess that, was that the intent? Am I recalling that correctly?
Yes.
I, I didn't have a problem with the way things have been, that, that, you know, you needed to bring it up ahead of time and give people a heads-up and information, but there were some people who did. So I think that was sort of where that came from. But I have, I have the same concerns that you do, Ms. Phillips, that have the same concerns.
It says here that in, in the Proposed Revisions, it says that after the Board has approved the agenda, no discussion or action shall be taken by the Board except on the subjects covered by the approved agenda. Well, you could approve at that moment, and then, and then it could be talked about without anyone having any chance to prepare, and that concerns me. I just don't think that's fair to any program, any person in our Murfreesboro City Schools. I wouldn't want to be surprised like that, to have something added, and I would want to treat someone with the same respect as I would like to have for myself.
I, I agree, and I, I would think that probably most of us would, would vote down adding things to an agenda that would do that. I would, I would hope we would.
And also, since it does not limit discussion on something that's being brought to the agenda, anything could be discussed and talked about with any program, involving any program or any person, without that person even being aware that it was going to be talked about that night, and I just don't think that's fair. So that, I do have serious concerns about that. I've been very satisfied with the way it's been handled. If there's an emergency of some kind, I'm sure Ms. Mathis can bring that to all of our attention without, you know, without having to revise our policy in such a way that would open the door to treating our, our employees in a way that I would not want to be treated myself.
I have a question. And I've been trying to get, we've discussed this many times, and at the board retreat that we had at the Chamber of Commerce Building, my assumption was at that point in time that everybody, even though Ms. Phillips had left, that everybody was in favor of adding something in this agenda so that we could bring up other business without having to put it off till the next board meeting. Now, can you tell me where this is, is going to be done? Is that going to be in the part of the approving of the agenda?
It could be, you could bring up other business either under the approval of the agenda, if you, if the, if a member wanted to add something to the agenda, and the Board would take a vote as to whether they want to, they are in agreement to add it, or you look at Item Six, Roman numeral Six, Other Business. That was my attempt to reach a compromise based on all the comments I've received on other business.
That's not a compromise, because what you have got here, the way I read it, under Other Business, for the sole purpose of a board member to request that an item be placed on the next meeting's agenda. That was not what we've been trying to do since whenever. What I want, and I think, I thought we had a consensus, in fact, everybody there except Ms. Phillips, and she had, she had had to leave, and I understand that, but it was going to come up tonight at this meeting, and we were going to have a place in the agenda format, whereas if we wanted to bring something up under Other Business or Approval of Agenda, but what you've got here on Agenda Approval says no discussion may be taken place by the Board except the subject covered by the approved agenda.
And that's if, if a board member said, "I want to add Item X to the agenda," and you took a vote, and everyone was in agreement, "Let's add Item X to the agenda." It then becomes part of the approved agenda, then it can be discussed at that meeting.
All right. So, so if somebody wants to bring something up at a meeting that is not on the agenda, like if we wanted to bring something up tonight, and under the approval of Agenda, that, at that point in time, I might say, "Yes, ma'am, I'd like to ask a question about so-and-so tonight." Am I right? I don't, I don't want this to come back and me be in the dark and, and not know what I'm voting on.
That's correct. If, and, and remember that Approval of the Agenda is a vote. A vote's going to be taken. So if you say you want to add that item, and Ms. Wade takes a vote, everyone's in agreement, then that item can be discussed that night. And the agenda tonight actually did include the Approval of the Agenda item on it.
I, I realize that, but we didn't, we didn't discuss it at all, and I assumed that we were waiting until we got to the policy, because we had not voted on that at the retreat.
Right, right. And these, remember, this policy's a combination of all the various suggestions, so it's giving you options. So I would like for you to take, for example, this section and put it to a vote and see, does the Board want this section to remain as written in this policy, or if you have a suggested revision, make a motion of how you'd want this section, this Roman numeral Three revised, if you want it to stay in the policy, and take a vote, so I know exactly how you want this policy written.
May I make a motion? Okay, sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was just going to make a motion in that we remove the Agenda Approval from this policy, VO Seven.
There's a motion on the floor to remove, if I'm correct, the Agenda Approval.
Uh-huh.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion. We have a vote.
Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, as you were saying, there's always a discussion. Is there a discussion on this?
I would like to suggest that we look at the minutes from the retreat that are found on Page Ten, and to read, just very quickly, to read silently, the three paragraphs where the bottom of the page that begin with Mr. Campbell, because it speaks to this issue, because I believe that Mrs. Baker's done an outstanding job of crafting that policy according to the directive we gave her at the December retreat. It's Page Ten.
What abouts are you?
You're on board retreat minutes and not?
December.
Board Retreat Minutes, yeah.
It's under Tab One, it's in the second set of minutes. I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
Now, one, one of the things that, that came from the TSBA meeting was that this was a way for the Board to maintain control over what came up at a meeting, and if there was something that was rather uncontroversial, someone wanted to talk about, you know, a visit, a very positive visit they'd made to a school or whatever, that wasn't likely to, to require anybody to be prepared, something like that could, could be added, but that it also would give the majority of the Board control over not allowing issues to be added to the agenda. And I think that, that several of us on the Board would be pretty conservative about what we would feel would be appropriate to be allowed to be added to an agenda.
Well, I think that is covered in Number Six, Roman numeral Six of that policy, that And I remember Ms. Duggan referencing Reed to Succeed. She wanted to be able to compliment, and she felt like she couldn't, she could not compliment them because it wasn't part of the agenda. But Ms., Ms. Wade, do we need to have a policy that would address being able to praise or compliment the system in some way?
At any time you want to praise someone for something that's going on in our system or something we're affiliated with, that has always been permissible here. If maybe I don't know about it, the other board members, you've always, we can always be recognized by the Chair. It's always good to know in advance, but if you wanted to praise Reed to succeed, that's ideal, because we've had Ms. Shaw to come in, talk about it different times. If you're working with it, that's not a problem to bring that. The only thing, I've dealt with other organizations that approve the agendas. First thing off the bat, the agenda is approved. Normally, it's what we're looking at, but the question always arises, is there anything you'd like to add? I was reading back through the minutes. If anything, that the Board Chair feels it's not something that is going to call somebody that they've not had prior, fencelifted, they wanted to talk about rezoning prior to the meetings, I would find that to be something that wait till the meetings are concluded, and then we come back, even if it means we need to meet before that as an open meeting to discuss some things with Mathis and her staff, I would vote it again, I would vote it down in an agenda, add it on there when they've not had a meeting to discuss it. I think as adults and board members, we pretty well know what's permissible to put on at a time, and I think I addressed it in the minutes at the last meeting, that we didn't want to do anything that would blindside anybody or cause any harm, and we're still going to stick to that. But if you have other business, we have a right to vote for or against any discussion on it. It's said in here that you can do that when you approve the agenda. If I bring up something that may be a personnel issue, and I know that's something I can't discuss right now, I know that when that motion comes through, I should be voted down, and that's what will happen. But you have a right, if you want to bring up a discussion, we've always done this in the past, if you have something you want to discuss, you brought it up. But I would think, be reasonable when you bring it up. If it's something, you're not going to get an answer tonight, then we put it off, you vote it off of that agenda, bring it back, just like we said, and I think Mrs. Baker defined it real well when she said Other Business. It's going to be times you cannot discuss things you bring up. A motion can hit the floor that we put this on next month's agenda, give the person that we're looking for the answer, a chance to research it, no discussion on it, it comes back. And is that kind of what you had in mind? Now, if you had something you wanted to bring up, Mr. Campbell, we talked about that, that I had no problem with it, as long as it could be something that we could discuss at hand.
Well, and, and that's what I understood from the retreat, uh, retreat, excuse me. Even Dr. Andrews, you know, indicated that it was a good idea that we could do it under Approval of the Agenda. I just want to make sure that on the Approval of the Agenda, if we bring something up, it can be on the agenda that night for either discussion or?
A motion.
Whatever the case may be.
All righty. I would hope that each board member would agree with that. If you bring it up, then there's a chance it's going to, a motion will follow to maybe place it on the next month's agenda.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am. That wasn't my purpose. My purpose was to place it on the agenda for that night, if it's voted in favor of.
If it's voted in favor of, it would be, but someone could also instead make a motion that it be brought up at the next meeting.
I agree. I agree.
Ms. Baker, doesn't that make Number Three and Number Six somewhat redundant?
And that was the intent. Remember, this is a combination of all the various suggestions I've, I've received, so I gave you options.
Well, the option, I mean, I certainly think that Option Six is better of, the better of the two, but I don't like either one of them. It's the better of the two. I think Number Three is, you know, it just opens Pandora's Box. We could, you know, we could waste taxpayers' money for programs and discussions and information that our employees have spent time discussing and learning and researching. We could, with the best will in the world, say something that, you know, put someone in a position where they haven't had a chance to research something, and that would, I would not want to be put in that position. Someone with a, a personal agenda could inadvertently say something that was hurtful to someone, and that person have no, no prior knowledge that their name was even going, or their program, or whatever they're working on was even going to be mentioned at the meeting, and I just don't think that's fair to our employees.
Well, and, and that's what we have to keep in mind every time someone comes up with something that they want to put on the agenda at the last minute, and, and I would think that we would be able to, to say, "No," you know, "We're going to vote no," and I think there is a stopcock on that happening.
Well, that's why I think if we're, if we were going to do either of the two, Number Six protects our employees' rights better than Number Three does. It protects the rights of people better.
I don't think they're the same thing. I think they're a little bit different in what they're handling.
Do you think they're somewhat redundant, Ms. Baker?
They, they both open the door to bring up Other Business. They both open that door. The Approval of the Agenda gives the entire Board the ability to vote whether or not that particular item will be discussed that night. Item Six allows a board member to say, "I have this other issue I'd like for the Board to address, and I would like to see it be put on the next week's, next month's agenda." It doesn't allow it to be discussed that particular night. So they're, they're similar in the fact that they both open the door to, for board members to bring up Other Business. One allows the Board to have control over whether that item's actually discussed that night, the other one allows a board member to request that it be put on the next month's agenda.
I think Number Six certainly protects our employees better, and, you know, at least they know in advance. They might know in advance that a program they're involved with, or they've poured out their heart and soul, their hours and time, was going to be discussed that night, you know, and what night it was going to be discussed. It wouldn't take them by surprise, which is a very serious concern.
Yeah, I think that all, that each one of us, that probably the majority of us would not approve an item that would, that would do that.
I'd like to comment on three, and I guess the Other Business too. I'm not sure that we can do this under state law, which grants the authority to establish the agenda to the Director and to the Chairman, Ms. Wade, and personally, I have great confidence in the two of them, if they will use their wisdom in establishing that and planning the agenda. I really can't see, I can't think of anything in 25 years that I've been on the Board that's just earth-shaking, it's got to be done tonight, and couldn't be put, placed on either, on the agenda the same day that you, the board members can call and ask to be, and I can't imagine that you wouldn't honor their request, put something on the agenda, and if not, if it wasn't suitable that night, I can't imagine it wouldn't be something that could wait until the next month. And I think we're talking about having a board meeting, not a, not a debate or discussion about matters, so I'd prefer us to not do three or the Other Business part personally, so I'll leave it at that.
I'm, just because we add something to an agenda does not mean that it's going to be a personnel matter. That you, you keep talking about the employees and all, and I understand that, but there are a lot of things that somebody may want to discuss that's not on the agenda, and it doesn't have to be a personnel matter. We're, we're, looks to me like we're honing in on, on the employees and the personnel, and I don't think that's, that's not necessarily always the case. I'm just looking for a way, folks, that we can discuss something at a board meeting if it's not on the agenda. Otherwise, we've got to wait for a month to discuss. It's already been stated that if something is brought up, that the Board would vote on it. If, if it is a matter that somebody is speaking to the Board, certainly the Chair has the opportunity to close that discussion. I call for a vote, please, ma'am.
I don't think the intent was to vote on that tonight, was it?
Yes, ma'am, there's a motion on the floor.
I need you to vote on the particular sections.
Oh, okay.
So I can revise the policy to bring back to you to take action on the entire policy.
Okay. Okay.
My motion was that we remove section three from the proposed revisions of BO seven.
I have one question for Ms. Baker. When you brought this format in, did I understand you to say that this was state format?
No, it is, it's based on suggestions that various board members have given. It's also pulled from TSB policies and other school system policies. This doesn't mimic any one school system, TSB, it is a combination of numerous suggestions. And some, some school systems did have approval of agenda. Not everyone did, but I found a couple that did. Some, I found a couple that had other business. So I looked at their language and utilized their language to help formulate the requests that have been made and need to draft this policy.
Yes, sir.
What does the city council do, Ms. Baker?
Do I have other business on the agenda, correct?
The city manager brings up other business if we have to, but we do not. We can call beforehand, you know, and request certain things, and we can have things pulled from the agenda before the meeting, but we do not bring up other business. And we can suggest to the city manager, you know, discussion, but we do not as a council, mainly because those agendas are publicized to the public, so the public will know what's going to be discussed. When you, when they, when they don't get notification, and you're talking about, then the mayor picks somebody that says they don't know anything about.
The only things I've ever seen council do under other business, or for example, if we've had a contract that needs council approval in order to face getting close to the holidays, and there's a possibility council won't meet for a couple of weeks. There's a contract we need their approval, and we just finally got the last signatures, and it didn't make them time to get on the actual agenda. That's the type of thing that comes up under other business at the council. It's never anything with wide public impact on the public. It's never anything that requires a public meeting or any of those type of issues. It's never a vote on ordinance. Those things don't, aren't, aren't ever brought up under other business. It's those kind of last-minute things that it's a timing issue that are brought up under other business.
There's a motion and a second on the floor about removing item number three, agenda And I hope that everybody's had their chance to...
I know that Mr. Washington addressed the other business, but what does the city council do about approval of the agenda?
Uh, the approval of the agenda is at the front of the meeting, at the first of the meeting.
But that is part of your...
But you don't add things to the agenda, you just approve exactly what's written?
Exactly what's written, and we have had some things that is wrong, but that's because of conversations before you got there. It's all right to withdraw something, but to add something is a different thing.
Can the city manager add, when you approve the agenda?
He doesn't. He brings up things on the other business to us, just like she said this year.
Only the, only the city manager brings up things on...
And he does, and most of that's what it is, but if there's something that I assume, he brings it up, and it's like she says, the contracts, the last-minute stuff, and all that kind of good stuff, because, you know, those things are time imperative.
Well, if, if nobody...
I'm sorry.
No, you have something to say?
I wasn't ready to add, I'm sorry.
That's all right, Mr. Campbell.
If, if, you're talking about publishing the agenda, so once that agenda is published, nothing can be changed?
Normally not, because, normally not, because the public, you know, that's how we notify them. So, you know, we made the mistake a few weeks ago on Main Street, and, and the Main Street people for that rezoning we're dealing with tomorrow got confused, it was confusion, and the meeting was at five. Well, you know, they didn't know that, so we didn't address the issue. They came for nothing, went back home, they'll be there tomorrow night, in full bloom.
But we would not be in that category because we don't publish our agenda.
Yes, you do.
Do we?
It's on, it's on the website.
It's online?
It's on the city website and the school board's website.
So what if the agenda is changed in the afternoon at four o'clock?
It should be changed on the website as well.
Okay, I didn't know that.
The reading of, believe it or not, and I want to commend you again, the way that you have it worded on the approval of the agenda is excellent. You're approving it, and you're approving what you're looking at. That's it. And then as you got down to other business, I thought it was wonderful. If something came up during the meeting, then unless it, as she said, earth-shattering, we've placed it and get it ready for the next meeting. Now, some things are going to come up. You may want to comment on something that's already happened tonight, maybe something that Michonne Nelson presented, you may have a question. That is other business, but it's nothing that you have to put off for another meeting, it's just something you may want an answer to. So this other business on here is excellent the way that you have it, because once you approve an agenda, you're looking at it, you're not planning on putting anything on it unless something comes up down here as they keep, we keep going through other business. And I know everybody has read it. We've got a motion on the floor to remove, does someone have a hand at one, make sure what? There's a motion on the floor, and yes ma'am?
In light of your comments, if we're looking specifically at what Mrs. Baker has provided us, and you look at number three, agenda approval, I do not see anywhere in that, the way it's been written and presented to us tonight, that anything could be added to that agenda. It's simply approving the agenda that's been set before us. So I'm somewhat, I don't quite understand why we'd want to remove that, because it's pretty standard in most business meetings that you approve the agenda, and sometimes it's approval with the rearrangement, because if someone's there to present and they need to leave early, you might let them present first. So you just rearrange the agenda, but you don't change the agenda.
I have no problem and no concerns about approving an agenda as it is already set, but if approving this item number three under the proposed revision opens the door to adding things to the agenda, I am not, I cannot, I don't feel supportive of that.
I think it could be construed that you could add something, because it says after the board has approved the agenda, you can't add anything. It doesn't, it doesn't say that you can't add that night or at that meeting.
And so, let me understand very clearly, Ms. Baker, the way it is written now, does it allow people to add, if this is approved, add things to the agenda?
I could clarify it if that's the board's desire, that it is not intended to add items to the agenda, only rearrange or remove items, if that's what the board's desire is.
Would you like to restate? No, that's another word. You want to kill this motion, and she take back her second, and then you make another motion to maybe add it. All righty. If she willing, first your second, I still be willing to rescind her.
I retract my second.
Thank you. All right, Mrs. Phillips?
All right, I make the motion then, that we, that Ms. Baker go back and develop language that clarifies that nothing can be, under the agenda approval, nothing can be added to the agenda.
Is there a second?
May I ask for clarification?
Yes, ma'am.
Do you want me to include that items may be rearranged or removed?
Yes, well, rearranged, yes, and removed.
And removed, yeah.
But nothing added.
But nothing added.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion?
Technically, I can't do that anyway. You couldn't add because you've had the publication requirement, so if that's the case, what we're talking about is move, right?
Well, in a way, but she's asking her in a motion to go back, add these other things to it, for clarification.
I'm just commenting on the adding part. You couldn't add anyway because of publication requirement.
What is the publication requirement anyway, Ms. Baker?
You have to advertise when your meetings are and generally what they are about for the regular meetings. If it's a special meeting, you have to say specifically what that special meeting is going to deal with, and only discuss the item advertised for the special meeting.
So that would not curtail it? It doesn't sound like Mr. Harper's doing that.
There's a motion on the floor, and there has been a second. Ms. Ridley, you have one more question?
I would like to clarify.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you saying that you cannot add, but you can rearrange or take off? Are you adding or taking off?
Adding, okay, not, not adding, rearranging or taking off.
Right, clarification, please. So then, under number six...
We haven't voted on that one.
I'm standing there, but that's going to depend on how I vote on number three. Number six states that if you want to discuss something at tonight's board meeting, and it's not on the agenda, it cannot be discussed. Is that correct? I want a clarification.
That's true.
So we don't have, so, so that we will not have anywhere in this policy that would allow Nancy Phillips to bring up something of interest or whatever at a board meeting to be discussed tonight. It would have, it could be brought up, but it would have to be put off until the next board meeting to discuss. Am I correct?
Yes.
So we don't have anything for other business?
You do have something for other business. You can bring it up, you just may not be able to have a full-blown discussion over it. That's why, nobody's taking away other business. It's just on here that you may bring it up and say, I'd like to talk about uniforms. Well, and this is saying that, yes, I'd like to bring it up, the board is made aware, and the public is made aware, and in return, we'd like to place it on next month's agenda for a discussion. That gives everybody a chance to, if they have any questions or need any research brought to them, we'd already have it, we have it, instead of getting into a discussion and we're just talking. You'd like to have all your facts, get all our work done before, no, it doesn't take your other business away, takes away a lot of discussion.
It takes the other business away from being discussed that night?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Can we go backwards for once?
Sure. Ms. Phillips? We're, we're voting to...
You want to restate the motion, please?
Yes, restate that motion. Me, or Mary, or Linda, somebody?
We'll have this. Mrs. Ridley, do you mind reading that motion to make sure that we have it clear?
You're saying that the first item on the agenda shall be the approval of the agenda. After the board has approved the agenda, you can withdraw or add, I mean, you can, you can withdraw, but you cannot, you can withdraw, you can rearrange, but you cannot add.
I don't think that's, I don't think that's quite right, because you said after the board has approved the agenda. That would be before the board approves the agenda, we can remove or rearrange the agenda, and then we approve it. Is that not right? Is that not what we meant? We would approve the agenda that night, but before we approved it, we could ask to rearrange or remove something. Once it's, once it's approved, that's it?
That's my understanding, is that correct?
Is that what we meant? So it's before we have approved it, we could, is, is that, did I understand that correctly? Okay.
You can take away, but you can't add.
Right, and that would be done before we approved the agenda, then once we approved the agenda, that's it. And then we're going to have enough common sense that if somebody says, well, I have to leave, well, okay.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mrs. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
No.
Ms. Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Dr. Andrews?
Yes.
And Mrs. Wade?
Yes.
Motion. Now, I'd like to talk about number six. I want to talk about number six.
All righty. Mrs. Phillips?
Oh, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Um, in a way, it seems to me that number six, in a way, it seems to me that number six is just simply not necessary, because if we're going to talk about it at any point, a board member can call Ms. Wade and Ms. Mathis and ask to have something put on the agenda, and so why we would need to change what we are doing, the way we've been doing it, I mean, no one has trouble getting things on the agenda, so I don't even know why we would need number six.
I do think there've been times when something has come up, and we've just said in the meeting, oh, let's put that on the next week's, you know, next month's agenda. I think that, that does happen, and it's just sort of a natural flow of events.
Right, oh, that's, that's fine when it's a natural flow of events, but to have other business at the end of the meeting. And I also think, once again, you're opening door to language that could be objectionable. As my mother used to say, it's not what you say, it's the way you say it. And you, a question or a topic can be brought up, or say, I want it to be placed on the next agenda, with, even without discussion, that could be stated in such a way that would imply or infer something negative, and once again, a person or a program, or people involved with the program, or parents, would be taken unaware. So I just don't see why that would, I, I don't want to open the door to language that I would consider, could possibly, and I'm not saying that any of the board members would, would engage in that, but it could possibly be objectionable or, or have some negative inference, so I don't see a reason for other business.
I think other business just tells us how we can have something placed on the agenda at the next board meeting.
Typically, what's happened in the past, Ms. Wade?
I've seen meetings where Mr. Harper, as board chair, would look down and ask if there was anything you needed to say or wanted to say, and I know he would look on each side of the board. And in past meetings that we've all sat in, people have blurted out, or, you know, not raising our little hands and getting their attention, they want to talk about so-and-so, and somebody comes up with a motion of, let's vote to put this on next week's, next month's agenda for a discussion, that gives everybody that's involved a chance to bring back the information. No matter what you call it, you're always going to have somebody with a question for the end of a meeting on something that you're not planning to table, but you want to discuss, but not at the existing meeting, because maybe it's something that we need to really do some research, get Mrs. Baker to bring us a comment on. My only thing with that is, I would feel through the respect for each other on this board, and respect for our teachers, our staff, our employees, that we would be kind in what we say, and at least before you say it, run that question through your mind and see how you would react if the same question was said to you. And I know I have all, and I've said it to the board members, respect. That's it in a nutshell, respect. People don't care how much I know, but they want to know how much I care. And certainly, we care about all of our employees to the point that I don't think we would jump out there and say anything, but I know every now and then you're mad and get to bubbling at a meeting, and it's something you want to bring up. You don't have to call it other business, I heard Mr. Washington say that, Mr. Haley brings it up at theirs. If it's something, and it, if it's going to keep down a lot of discussion, or maybe it's going to hurt somebody's feeling, during the course of our meeting, if you want to slip me a little note and say, I'd like to see us talk about this, I have no point, or if you want to ask before the meeting, maybe comes up time you get here, we're going to have to come to a consensus on some things. We really are. I don't see having a lot of divisive conversation about other business. We know how to work it, I think Mrs. Baker did a good job when she put it on here. It's going to come up, no matter if you leave it off, it's going to come up. The thing is, as board chair, my job is going to... The thing is, as board chair, my job is going to be to bring, keep the meeting in order, respect you to say it's something we're not going to be able to talk about, it's going to be on the agenda, and if I need to, I'll answer a vote. So I think we can work with that, but we need to get past, I think we've been on other business for, what, two or three months now? We need to get beyond that.
I, I have.
And just figure out how we can work with this situation of other business. Yes, ma'am.
I have a motion. I'd like to make a motion.
Any more discussion on this other business before I entertain a motion?
She can entertain the motion, then we could talk about it more, I guess. I'm not sure what her motion is going to be.
I'd like to make a motion that we change number six, and we have it in the same format as the city council, and we add another element to it that Ms. Mathis or Ms. Wade can bring up other business, the board chair.
And the, number A and number B, were you leaving them as they are?
No. Uh-uh. I would just, I would follow the format of the city council, and where Mr. Haley would, the city manager, would bring up other business, I would make a recommendation that Ms. Mathis will be very cognizant of our system, she'll be aware of other business, or perhaps a board member could speak with you and you as board chair. So that's my motion.
You heard the motion. Is there a second?
I, I don't quite understand it. Would you still have the option to bring up things to be put on the next agenda?
No, I think that.
That would just.
I would believe, I always believe that Ms. Mathis and Ms. Wade are able to, they work for, you know, two weeks in advance, setting up the agenda. At any time, a board member is free to call and ask to have something placed on the agenda. I can't see, as Mr. Hopper stated, that anything would be so imperative that, that it would must, it must be, you know, brought up that night when you can make a simple phone call the next day. So, you know, I just don't, I just think that it's possible that, for example, as Ms. Baker was saying, that contracts or some business sort of thing would need to be dealt with in a very timely way, but outside of that, I can't see any reason to bring up topics in any way that, that have not already been placed on the agenda. I just don't see a need to do that. And if it happens, and it needs to happen, under the guise of, of our director of schools or our board chair.
So do you want the other business to read? Other business is for the sole purpose of the board chair or Mrs. Mathis to request that an item or issue be placed on the next meeting's agenda?
Or the director of schools.
Okay. Our director, okay. No discussion of the items or issues shall take place during other business, A, board member may request. Well, that would eliminate number B. Is your motion? When I read this, let me know if this is your motion. Other business is for the sole purpose of the board chair or director of schools to request that an item or issue be placed on the next meeting's agenda. No discussion of the item or issue shall take place when brought up during other business.
So you, so you, that, okay, what she said was that the chair or the director of schools would, could not put something on the, on that agenda, they couldn't bring anything up to discuss at that meeting, that it was only to put it on for the next meeting.
Well, no.
That's what, that's what she just read.
Okay.
And what you meant, what you meant was that if there was something urgent, that, but, but not, not, something urgent timely-wise, but not of great, you know, public interest, that they could bring it up and discuss it at the meeting. Is that what you meant?
Yes.
That we could discuss and vote on it?
Something, something urgent, but not of public, great public interest, that needed to be discussed.
Okay.
Then, Mrs. Ridley is going to need your full motion, so she can write it down, so it can go in the name.
I make the motion that number six, under number six, other business, that we strike the existing A and B, and that we place our other business, we follow the same format of the city council, whereas our director of schools or our board chair can bring up for discussion something at the current meeting. Something that is, you know, timely and of not great public interest, so that, you know, we're not leaving our parents out or someone who would be interested in the discussion. Well, you don't have to write that last part. I was just explaining.
And we, we can also maybe add that it says, "Every effort will be made by the, the chair and the director of schools to have items placed on the agenda before the meeting."
Right.
That's kind of obvious, I guess.
That's good.
Would that be okay?
Ms. Ridley, did you get the motion?
Well, I did get the motion. You are actually giving the authority to the board chair and the director of schools to add an item under other business for discussion that evening. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Items of, that would not be of significant interest to the public, that would need to be advertised prior to discussion.
Exactly.
Is that exactly what you want?
That's exactly right. Thank you, Ms. Ridley.
Does that sound like what you were talking about?
My only problem is, who is going to determine the severity of the item? Is the board?
No, Ms. Mathis and Ms. Wade.
Director and the chair.
Okay.
So our individual rights as board members elected by the taxpayers to bring up an item, not for vote, but just for discussion, is being eliminated here?
Not being eliminated. This is set to the next meeting.
Absolutely not.
To bring it up to the board chair, Ms. Wade?
No. That's what I said in the beginning. If you had something you want brought up, you're welcome to, if you've got it during the meeting, could you not write it and send it to me?
And then you would bring it up?
Or choose not to.
Yes.
If it's something that's urgent and not, not, yeah.
Yes. Is there a second for the motion?
Uh, yeah, second.
Any more discussion?
I'm, I'm interested in whatever anyone else would have to say about it.
Is there any more discussion on this particular motion, and discussion on this other business? Here and now?
I'm just, I'm just concerned that we are limiting ourselves as board members for discussion on an item, with that it being done so much, much in advance. We also have to remember that Ms. Wade's not always going to be chairman, Ms. Mathis is not always going to be director, maybe for 20 years, but after that, it may not be, but what we're doing right now, I'm assuming, is what we're putting in place for a long time, and even though you may say, "Is there business?" You know, the next chair may not do that. I think we're, I think we're cutting off our nose in spite of our face, as the old saying goes, because I, I think we're.
You can always revisit a policy, even after you vote on it, revise it, you can always revisit it for clarification or changing. Even if I'm not board chair, or Ms. Mathis is not director of schools, and you're still here, revisit it, change it.
I understand that. But we've been discussing this since about May or June, and you see how long we've been discussing it? I hope there's nothing monumental that comes up, we've got to make a quick decision, because we can't talk about it one night and vote on it, the way I understand it.
That's really because we're a publicly elected board that is responsible to the community, to let them know what we're going to talk about. I think that's, makes it a little bit different.
Yes, ma'am, and I think sometimes the public expects us to make decisions and not wait four and five months to do so. I'm ready to vote.
Call for a question.
If, Ms. Wade, if, if we vote to not approve this motion, does that leave the current writing as our motion, or would we look at something different next month? Or would this remain?
If this motion dies, you have a right to go back and make another motion, that you would like to revisit the other business, but I suggest that you revisit it with Mrs. Baker.
Okay.
And she can, in return, let us know. I was hoping that we could get this, get this resolved. Even if you put it into the hands of the board chair or director, you still have a right, as a board member, to this, to bring up other, it's not taking away your right of other business at all. You still have it. You just may not get to blurt it out in the meeting, but you still have that right to bring it before the board chair, or, to, really, you need to bring it before both of us. If you come to a meeting and it's on your mind soon as you get here, you've got time to bring it. If it's something that we deem that we can go ahead and discuss, you add it to the meeting. If it's not, then we tell you nicely, "We need to add this to next week's agenda." I could very easily say, "On next week's agenda, I'd like Ms. Mathis to have so-and-so added for a discussion." We've always been able to do that. So nothing has really changed. We've always been able to bring stuff, just, you may not get to have the discussion you want that night.
But this verbiage would remain policy for us, and if we voted no on the current motion on the floor?
It is not a policy yet, so.
Yeah, it's not in the policy yet. What I'm trying to get from the board tonight is direction as to how they want the final policy presented to them next month.
That was my question.
I want a clarification.
Yes, ma'am.
Legally, in state law, what does it actually say about the other business piece? I need that clarified in my own mind.
Other business is not addressed in state law.
Okay.
That is at various boards' discretion. It is addressed as far as a special meeting. You have to only discuss what's been advertised for a special meeting, and if it's matters that involve public hearings, those must be advertised. You can't bring those up at the last minute.
Then what you have here as item six could very easily remain as it is.
Yes.
And if it's that important, that pertinent, we do it. We've already said that we may have to have a special meeting to discuss it prior to another meeting. Have we not said this a few times in our board meetings? You know, it'd come up that we brought it up, that we'd have to make sure that everybody could meet on that, and we've had call meetings for the budget before.
Are you, are you talking about number seven now?
No.
Special mea?
No, no. Still number six. It doesn't take away your right, if you, if it's something that important that comes up tonight, that Mrs. Mathis couldn't pull this board to see what would be a good night, you still got to publish it, that you're going to discuss it. And that's the only thing I'm having a little problem with right now, is you bring it up tonight, and if you brought it up, other business, you've not let the public know that you were going to discuss that. So that's why I liked your language when you said, "No discussion on that item would be done." And that gives you a chance to post it for the next meeting, and give the public a chance to, if they have any questions, they can come, or they can forward them to Mrs. Mathis.
And, Ms. Wade, if I may, the motion that's before the board, saying that the chair and the director can bring up an item under other business and have it discussed, that's already the chair and the director's prerogative, because they are the two, by state law, that are required to create the agenda. Um, may I ask a question?
Question.
Ms. Baker, under this other business, the way it is currently, in the current language, if a board member brought up something, say, he wanted to discuss new flooring, would the board be able, I mean, would they have to make, could they make a motion and, and choose not to discuss it at the next meeting?
At the next meeting?
Mm-hmm. Could they make a motion and say, and vote on whether they chose to discuss it or not discuss it? It's, you know, the board has the prerogative to make motions on any item brought before them, and they can vote it up or down. The chair has, the chair and, the director and the chair have the discretion to create the agendas under state law.
Right.
So if the board, if the board voted not to put an item on an agenda, then the chair and director could abide by that.
Okay. Well, basically, we, we wouldn't have, the way I understand this, is under other business, the way it's written now, somebody could say, "I'd like to put this on next week's, next month's agenda." Then, the two of them would decide whether or not it went on next week's agenda, or next month's agenda later on, and it wouldn't be our responsibility to decide that it, whether or not it went on the agenda.
Ms. Wade?
That'd be my understanding, the way this is, the whole thing is written.
But at that point, there could be input from other board members. Again, we would not have to take action on an item, but we could discuss that, yes, we think this would be a good idea, and possibly, one board member may say, or may make a good suggestion for the staff or Ms. Mathis to, to do, to prepare for the next board meeting. That way, we don't have one person calling you and asking you to put an item on the agenda. We would have everyone hearing the item, and they could have some input on what they would like. If we were asking for a report, per se, then we may say, "I would like this in the report," or, "Could you look at this aspect of the report?" So.
I'm not sure what. I wanted to add, on that point, I want to make sure you aren't, that you understand that adding this item to the policy doesn't take away board members' ability to contact the director and the chair in between meetings and request that items be placed on the agenda. You still have that available to you as a board member.
So, I think.
The, um, I, I'm not sure what Dr. Buttrum exactly was saying in his last comment. You were talking about suggestions, a discussion of why something should be or shouldn't be added. That sounds like discussion to me.
That would be discussion.
But it says no discussion.
But no action taken.
But it says, "No discussion of the item shall take place," as it's written now.
Unless, unless the chair and the board voted to discuss it, the board can vote to discuss it if the board, as a majority, wants to.
Not under this policy.
Not, not the way.
No, no, on, on this, what you're saying here, the way I understand it, is that you're saying how things can be added to next month's agenda. You're not really doing anything about tonight's agenda, because you can't discuss it tonight. You can bring it up, but you can't discuss it unless the chair agrees. Am I right, Ms. Wade, or am I wrong?
And maybe I'm misreading it. I, I hear where you can bring it up, but right behind it says, "No discussion of the item or issue shall take place when brought up during other business." You can't discuss it. The only thing I could see out of would be to ask Mrs. Mathis to get whoever's involved. If you needed anything after the meeting is over and you brought it up, you have a right to either send us an email the next day, or tell her that night, "I'd like for this report to be in next month's meeting," or you want somebody to do it, but you're not going to be able to sit and discuss it the night it's brought up.
Ms. Wade, I have a, a question about, or a suggestion about that, an example even. For instance, I know we had talked about looking at the tuition charged to county, out-of-county students, and that's not only agenda tonight, but I'm going to be writing you or calling you to ask that that be put on next month's agenda. But if I would have said tonight, "I would like that to be discussed for next month's agenda," then everyone here would be able to say, "That's a good idea," or, "We might need to get someone to investigate this aspect of that, that request." And by asking you tonight, everyone would be able to, to have that input where they would not, if I just called you at your office and asked you to put that on the agenda.
If you call her at the office and ask her to put it on the agenda, and it goes on the agenda, we see it, and then we can call her and ask her to get, or ask Mrs. Mathis to get other reports or information for the meeting.
I do ask, if you have something that you want, you have a right to carbon us both, but definitely keep the school director in the loop. Mrs. Mathis has the access, access to everybody that can answer the majority of the questions. If you ask me something about. about tuition, I'm gonna have to do the same thing you're gonna have to do, is forward it to her. I do ask, and I'll, I'll reiterate this again. It goes to Mrs. Mathis about board policy, and then in return, she's gonna make sure the board chair and all other members know what the question is. But she can get the answer to our question a whole lot faster than me trying to get it. Uh, and I'm having some trouble with my emails, so I know the best thing to do is to send it to her, and she's gonna carbon me. But if it's something pertinent, you want to talk with just me, then you send it to me, and let me know that this, something you just wanted to ask me, and I'll make, and I'll take care of that.
We can call.
May I ask a question?
Well, I mean, something personal between the two of us, they know.
May I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I have one more question, and that is this. Adding other, uh, uh, my motion about asking, uh, changing it to where our director's schools and our board chair have the ability to add something to the agenda business-wise exam, for example, does, that, that doesn't really need to be, listen, when I listen to you, because they already have that right?
Yes, they already have that ability.
They already have that right. In that case, I withdraw my motion, because I've learned from you tonight, you know, so that, that doesn't need to be in. So, that what I would want to do then.
Do the, who, who seconded it?
Susan.
I, I have a, I have a question. Would that mean, like, during the meeting? I guess nothing's gonna come up during the meeting that you wouldn't know about ahead of time.
Because typically, they have something that needs to be added, they add it prior to the meeting started. They've got that ability, and it's been done, and it will continue to be done because things happen at the last minute sometimes. I, I know contracts particularly, grants, sometimes we get notice from the federal government the day of our board meeting, and we need that approval immediately before the next month's board meeting comes about.
In that case, since it does, and since that would be redundant, um, because since they already have that right, and since this other business doesn't really direct, uh, address what Mr. Campbell wanted, as I understand it, then I suggest that we strike this number six. That's my motion now.
I, I can withdraw my second on the other one.
There's a motion on the floor to strike number six. There's been a second? Is there a second? Is someone seconding?
To withdraw number six.
Two, no second. Uh, the motion of Mrs. Phillips was to strike number six, other business. Is there a second?
I'll second it, so we can vote on it.
Right.
So, everybody's on the, knows what we're gonna vote on now, to strike number six completely. Ms. Ridley.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Duggan?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
Dr. But?
No.
Dr. Andrews?
Uh, let's see. No.
Mrs. Wade?
No.
So.
So, other business is still there?
It's still here. It, it's still here.
Just that, but all it is, is you can say, wanna discuss that, put that on the agenda. We don't have to vote on it. We don't discuss it. It's just put in your laps to decide if you want, are going to put it on the agenda. Okay. Is that right?
Thank you. Now, we shall move on, Mrs. Mathis. Let me apologize for the, you know, the long discussion, but it was good discussion, so thank you for being patient.
Item F is also an item that was not resolved at the retreat and at previous board meetings, and is continuation of discussion at board board sessions.
I want to make this very short.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, if it's the feeling of the board that we do not need to have on our calendar ongoing work sessions, special meetings, and I don't want us to get caught up in just the terminology this evening. We're just talking about additional meetings to discuss board issues. I understand that every board meeting has to meet the sunshine law. There would have to be an agenda. I understand all of those things. Um, we're looking at some very unprecedented times with just the way the economy is, and I know that there probably gonna have to be budget issues discussed this year like they've never had to be discussed before. If maybe we can even just try some work sessions that we could say, within the next week or before the next board meeting, actually have some dates put down on paper so everyone on the board would know, because everyone on this board is very busy. We work, uh, so we would know when those, you know, ahead of time, in a, a long period ahead of time. Like, we know when all the board meetings are gonna be in, what, July, we're given the calendar for the year. If we could know ahead of time, because we know when Mrs. Mathis has to present the budget to the city council, I mean, that's pretty much written in stone every year. You know, if we could maybe just try some board work sessions just to discuss the issues of the budget this year, and make sure that each of our board members can be present at those meetings. I think it's critical that all the board members are at those meetings because they're very critical, and I think this year probably even more so than ever before. So, I guess what my motion would be tonight is on a trial basis for work sessions, that we could go ahead and determine two or three, uh, times to meet for the sole purpose of discussing the budget.
Is this prior to the February meeting?
Not, no, not prior to the February meeting, but a good bit of, you know, there might be one between now and then. I mean, that would be the, uh, pleasure of the board. But I'm just saying, if between, say, the February meeting and when Mrs. Mathis has to present that budget to the city council, that we could know pretty soon what those dates would be. And I know that Mrs. Ridley normally polls all of us, but that we wouldn't wait to maybe two weeks prior to the meeting to decide when that might be.
I think.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I, I think in, in years past, I, I think you have a good idea of, of trying to set that up, uh, more in advance than we've done in the past. We've ten, we have had one, two, sometimes three work meetings with each budget, so, um, or whatever you wanna call it. It's a special meeting, uh, it's a, yeah, it's a special meeting. Uh, we meet outside the, the regular times. We have quite a bit of discussion about it. And I, I can see the point of trying to get the time set up ahead of time, and because maybe it's going to be a bit more difficult this year, we might want to go ahead and set up more times, and then we can cancel if we, it looks like we won't need to do it perhaps. I can see the point of doing that.
Well, there's a motion. Is there a second?
Uh, what, what's the motion?
That we go ahead and set exact dates for, and not that we'd set the date tonight, but that the motion would allow, you know, Mrs. Ridley to be given the directive that she goes ahead and polls us, uh, about meeting dates, specifically to discuss the budget, maybe starting sometime between February, the February board meeting, and the, you know, first of April.
I can second that.
We had a motion and a second. Are there any questions?
I have a question. What, Mrs. Mathis, when do you have to present that budget to the city council?
It goes to them in May. We actually bring you, we have on our annual calendar that we bring you, uh, in February, our schedule for all the meetings, for, uh, the budget, and, uh, when the budget approval would be by you, and then when the budget approval would be by the board. So, that is on our annual agenda, but I, I do agree that, I'm sure you all need to get on your calendars some dates very early for our, uh, special meetings.
So, do we even need this motion? I mean, uh, it sounds like.
We'll certainly do it. If you all would like to have the motion to assure that we do it, we certainly will, but we, we will get some dates and get them early for you.
Okay.
I would like to see us have those dates set prior to that February meeting.
We'll be glad to do that.
Because each of us in here work, and, you know, it means a range of schedules, and, yeah, so.
Okay. Do you have a question, Ms. Phillips?
Just wondered how this was different than what we've done in the past, exactly?
Probably not terribly different, except maybe we'll poll you a little earlier.
Okay.
We'll be glad to do that.
Mrs. Duggan, did you have in mind how many meetings you were thinking about when she sets the time up? Were you talking about two meetings maybe, or?
I'd say let's do three. If we need to cancel the last one, then we can cancel the last one.
And we're just, uh, no vote to be taken. We'll go ahead and just wait on some dates to come out, and everybody can check their schedules.
Do you propose a time of the day for these meetings? Are we just gonna see what, and I don't know when the nor, previous years when they've met?
We typically have met in, uh, a lunch session. Uh, I hope that might work.
I think, I think for those of us that have full-time jobs, it's gonna be tough to get off three or four more times for noontime meetings. It will be for me.
Well, we will just poll everyone, and if everybody can't meet at lunch, then we will not set it for lunch. We'll, we'll make sure that all of you can be present.
Were you, in the past, we've had, like, semi-annual retreats that, uh, were you thinking of this in lieu of those retreats, or what?
No, um, I wasn't thinking of that in lieu of those. When we look at, we've had two retreats since I've been on the board. I know they've been shortened, I think, from what the boards had previously, but from our December board meeting, there were several items that we did not get to at that board meeting, um, at that retreat. So, I think we just need to leave the door open for our special meetings, maybe a little bit more than it has been in the past, to make sure that if we have items that don't get covered and we can't cover them in a board meeting at our regular time, that we can take care of that business every time like ma- matter.
I think it's gonna be hard with everybody's schedules to get another meeting in every month of it.
Well, I'm not, I'm not suggesting that we put one in every month.
If no more discussion, um.
And I, I withdraw my second, and did you withdraw your move, since it's being taken care of? Okay.
And one thing we may want to consider, when we had the retreats, it was two days, and it gave us the ample time than we needed. By cutting it back to a few hours, it is tough to get in everything that's on that agenda. So, you may want to think about the retreat again and making it a two-day retreat. It's easier to plan two days in a row than scatter over the calendar, three or four days.
And in fact, another item that was not discussed at retreat that, uh, was left over from the December second retreat, discussion of ways to utilize technology to be more informed of the day-to-day things that occur within the system, i.e., post questions of interest to all stakeholders via the net.
And that was my suggestion. Again, I, I really don't think that, uh, we need to discuss ways. I think we should start to utilize our website, uh, much like they're going to be doing with the rezoning now. Maybe we could, as a board, uh, discuss and put a question on the website every month where we would get information back the following month, because so many of us come into these meetings and say, I've talked to so-and-so, uh, and depending on the circle you run with, depends on who you talk to. So, um, I think we would get a better view of the general public by putting a, a question on our website. Uh, and it may be something, uh, as simple as, do you think the system should consider rezoning the entire system? You know, something where we would get input back from the, the community at large. I think this should, uh, enhance our communication with the stakeholders and the taxpayers, and, uh, also give, give them a little bit better voice than what most of them probably get at this point.
You know, I think voice is very important. I agree with Dr. Buttram on that. Perhaps the questions could go to the community advisory council, because they're supposed to be very representative of our community, and, and, um, that would be a really great place for that to, to happen.
It would be, uh, to have them answer the question also, but remember, I'm, I'm trying to reach out through our technology, what we have already, what we are able to do, and involve many stakeholders beyond the 2025 Community Advisory Committee.
I would suggest, I'm sorry. Uh, doesn't the news journal have, like, on page two, oftentimes, little questions and surveys? And I agree with the internet, but everybody doesn't have internet. And we've got a lot of families represented within our schools that don't have internet, and they may not have the newspaper either, I don't know, but some of them may have the newspaper and not have the internet, and they can always respond to the newspaper, I think, with some of those. I, I just think if, if we're looking to get a broad section that.
Well, we could also, Mr. Campbell, uh, if we announced the question, like our question for February, we announced it at the end of tonight's meeting, we would be announcing it to the public on TV, and they could respond. Uh, it, it just helps open up the communication again to the general public and our, our stakeholders, and I think that's one of our goals in our plan to communicate better with our stakeholders.
The only thing is, I would, I mean, I have concerns about anonymous responses. I, you know, I'm not sure how much credibility I can give to something where a person hasn't signed your name, so.
Well, I'm talking about yes and no questions, like, uh, uh, the, the issue last summer with the, the air conditioning on buses. Should, should we look at spending money on air conditioning on buses? And we could just get yes or no. I really don't want the personal blogs that the D and J has. I, that's not what I'm, I'm wanting. I'm just saying that this would give us a lot of credibility with our, uh, the public and taxpayers in at least letting us get a majority of how they feel.
It scares me. I think it's opening a Pandora's box.
I, I think, one of the problems I see with that is I've, I've seen recent cases where, uh, there's, um, you know, ballot stuffing on those kinds of polls, where, uh, a person, um, gets a whole bunch of people to vote one way and has some people vote over and over and over, and I think it can be kinda misleading. So, I'm, I'm not, I'm not sure how much validity I would give to something like that. Talking about anonymous still, yes and no's.
And it wouldn't be the validity that would be in question. I think it would be the information that we're trying to garner from the, uh, the public.
Yeah, that would be in question. Well, I think, I think that was.
Technology?
Well, I had asked Dr. Buttram about the technology end of, because I misunderstood the question too, but he explained what he meant by just, and I had asked him, what part did the board play, and his answer was, uh, we would be in charge of making up the questions that went out there on the, uh, website for them to answer. I too had concerns like everybody else. I didn't want somebody to use that as a sounding block, uh, like they do in some of the other in the paper, and I worried about some of the things that would be said. Instead of answering the question, somebody's gonna jump out in left field and say some things. I didn't know how to curtail that, and when you don't have a name, you have no way of going back and maybe finding out what they meant by their answer. So, my question was, did you want something out, you said just a yes or no, but is the, people that are really good with this would know. Is it just a way to punch a yes, and they can't write anything behind it? Just a yes? If they would stick to something like that, that would be a wonderful, you don't get to do anything but a yes. If you want to vote 20 times of the yes, that's your feelings. But long as they can't come up and start writing some stuff, that would be just really horrible, uh, and at the discretion of Mrs. Mathis and her staff, if it got to that, I definitely want that. It would certainly be.
Well, if everybody said they wanted air conditioners on buses, would that then mean that you all are going to put air conditioners on buses? I mean, is that?
No, but it would give us a better idea of how the general public felt.
But you know, another thing, another thing is that, um, you know, even if it said yes or no, we get the American Idol syndrome going with a hu, you know, one person punching yes, 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 and then how much validity can we as a board give anonymous results, which could be very invalid, invalid results?
Yeah, that hap, that happens. I've seen that happen a good bit with the, with the internet kinda questionnaire.
Should we move on?
Yes. Uh, let me ask, uh, Mrs. Mathis, you've got folks here at the central office. Could you get them and the technology folks to look into, do people really send messages over the internet to us here, asking questions? Is it something that we've never tried before? We're innovative. We wanna do some new stuff, so, I mean, I get questionnaires all the time at work, and they never ask my name, so you're free to put your truthful answer. And I've never had a problem with that. You're not gonna know who sent it anyway. Could you check with the staff or the technology folks?
You mean if they could send us an anonymous message?
Well, if they've sent us messages, maybe there, is there a place for them to submit a question to you?
Yes, there is.
Do they use it? Is it used? Is it used a lot?
It's on our webpage, one of the first things that's listed there invites the public to email you all. And then all of your email addresses are listed on the, under the board tab, if you click on the board tab. Some of you have your personal email addresses, and some of you have chosen to use the email address for the system, which then means that we forward it to you. I know recently, we forwarded you two emails.
So it is used some?
As much as the public would want to use it, it's used. I think if anybody wanted to contact you, all they need to do is go to the webpage, see what your email address is, and of course, your addresses, when you registered to run for office, your addresses were listed, so they could write you a letter to your home if they wish to go to the election commission and look that up, that is public information. We don't list your addresses on our webpage, just because you haven't asked us to, but if you wanted us to, we would.
I think there may be in the near future, I'll say very near future, that there may be an occasion that, and maybe after the zoning meetings, people may start using the net out there to send a few things to us, their feelings about it, they're entitled.
Sure.
But it's a good thing, we're, we're gonna talk about a lot, and say this year, this is 2009 for us, and we're gonna be doing a lot of new things, so I don't think this particular thing here, posting questions, is gonna die. I think it'll come up again, or maybe, and it could be something about the budget that we bring back, and so, okay, let's push it out there and see. So, thank you, Dr. Bertram, for your, your question to us. I don't think it's going to really die tonight, but we have had some discussion. The website is available for folks to send in, and maybe this is something in the very, very near future that the board will want to do, is maybe post a question out there, or if one comes in, we take the time to answer.
Okay. There are three remaining items for you, the personnel update, information on personnel hired since your November meeting, since we did not have a regular December meeting, this is since your November meeting. Those employees completing their 90 days are listed on the agenda, and then behind tab seven, you will find new hires, interim teachers, and retirements, and resignations. And I'm sure Mr. Wilkerson will be glad to respond to any concerns or questions.
Ms. Phillips?
May I, Mr. Wilkerson, are we doing exit interviews on our employees?
Exit interviews?
Yes, yes. Actually, the administrative...
And next, your monthly revenue expenditure report, you'll find behind tab eight, up through December 31st, we're halfway through the year, and we are on target. And I'm going to let Mr. Anderson, I know this is something of keen interest to you, how we're doing financially with all the woe about the economy. I think we are very fortunate that we do not have a gloom and doom picture. I think because of our situation, we are able to keep our focus on children, and I don't think our children, our staff, will have to worry in any way for the remainder of the year, but Mr. Anderson will have some good news on our revenue flow.
Okay, the main, the main comparison of budget totals, you can see, we are still in the hole, we will remain that way until property tax starts coming in. This report on revenue represents through October of the sales tax collection, which is a two-month process from the time, time we get it. But we actually have now received the November, so I went and ran some numbers on that, and our sales tax is only off slightly, we're only $18,000 behind on sales tax collections through five months, which is really good, in my opinion, based on where we're, 'cause we budget very conservatively on that. And our property tax collections through five months is up slightly from where it was last year, so overall, we are, it's up 0.14%. Now, that, what you're seeing here is through 10 months, I went and projected out, I mean, through the October, I went and projected out November as well. So we're right on target for our revenue right now, just if the economy doesn't go any further down, we, we should be in good shape on that. So we feel really good about our revenue picture right now. On the expense side, we're right on target on that as well. So we feel pretty good where we are right now, and, and seem to be in better shape than what's going on, because we're dealing with around the state. We're very fortunate that people are shopping in the city limits and keeping our revenue flows coming in, and people are still paying their property taxes, so we're very fortunate to have that.
May I, may I comment? And, and I know you're gonna keep us surprised every month, because we're all a lot more concerned than we've probably ever been before, so I appreciate the, the update, and I hope it'll continue to be as optimistic, but we all have our reservations about that.
Well, we do, we do as well. That's why we are monitoring it daily, and that's why I'm going now, line item by line item, on every single one, to see where we are in everything, rather than just category, I'm breaking down to line items.
Ms. Wade?
Mr. Hopper?
The pupil transportation expenses up about $200,000, is that, I know you do the front-end accounting, is that, have the cost of a bus in there?
We have two, two buses.
Or is that just operating costs or what?
No, that's the, we bought the buses beginning of the year, therefore it skews the percentages, 'cause we spent the majority of the money out at the front end, and it'll catch up by the end.
Any other board members have any questions?
Okay, your last report is the attendance report for the fourth month, behind the last tab. For K through six, we have 6,865 students, and then if you look at the far left, the bottom, we have an additional 367 pre-K students, for a total enrollment of 7,232 students. And looking at K six, our numbers compared this year with last year, on the average, we are a net two students ahead for the first four months last year and the first four months this year, so we're pretty much staying even with last year's numbers, interestingly enough. And those are all the reports. Chairwoman Wade.
If there are no questions with the attendance report, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Hopper?